I will call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. It is Tuesday, December 17th. It is 6:00 PM. Ms. Trevino, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mr. Scott, Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mary Houston.
Uh, here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
President.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We have a court president.
Okay. We do not have anyone set to do the invocation this evening, so I will let everyone do whatever it is that you would like to do later on after the meeting is over. We will go to our pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Alrighty. Next is citizen comment period of our program. The city council hears citizen comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak do need to sign up. There's online or you can do it at the city clerk's office prior to 5:45. If you're speaking online, then you would have been given a link to the Zoom. You may speak once during citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak, uh, we don't have any public hearings. You will have three minutes to speak after you state your name. You'll see the timer on the screen. You'll start in the green. And when you get to the yellow, you've got 20 seconds left. And when the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. We endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and in an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. If you do any of those, you will hear the gavel and I will ask you to leave the council chambers. This is your warning. And... Our commenters this evening, I'll read some of the names out first so you can start lining up. I have Noah Brock, followed by Annie Donovan, Virginia Parker, Lisa Marie Capoletta, and Max Field Baker. And I see Mr. Brock coming in.
Good evening, council. My name is Noah Brock and I'm here to talk about Agenda Item 16, the Guiding Principles for the 89th Texas Legislative Session. In the document under the Economic Development heading, the first bullet point says, "Support the developments on and near the San Marcos Regional Airport, FM 110, and adjacent railroad, which will provide intermodal freight capacity and a key link to the national transportation infrastructure, as well as bring thousands of jobs to the area." This is a very specific location that's called out in this guiding document. The wording sounded familiar, so I looked up what the last principles document said in November of 2022. This just replaced the word "smart terminal" with the location. So I went a little bit further, back to 2020. The document said the following, "Support city and broader community efforts related to the proposed San Marcos Air, Rail, and Truck Smart Terminal, an intermodal industrial park that will serve the needs of light industrial manufacturing, logistics distribution, air cargo, and aviation support businesses." Then I went even further to 2018 where I found the origin statement. "Support city and broader community efforts related to the proposed San Marcos Air, Rail, and Truck Smart Terminal, an intermodal industrial park that will serve the needs of light industrial manufacturing, logistics distribution, air cargo, and aviation support businesses." This includes working with our congressional delegation to support a current EDA grant application put forth by Colville County and another potential EDA grant to be submitted by the city. Is it the city's goal to develop an intermodal freight facility at this location? It appears that the original idea was to support light industrial manufacturing with a connection to the airport. Now we have a heavy industrial park that can stack containers 80 feet high with no connection to the airport. Why does the wording keep changing to fit a developer's current project? Isn't a guiding principle supposed to come from the city and not a developer? Do you remember when the city council voted unanimously to approach the developer of this project and change the development agreement because the people did not support it on May 2nd, 2023? I would like to see a motion to remove this item from the document in its entirety. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Next is Annie Donovan. Good evening, council. My name's Annie Donovan and I'm here to speak about Agenda Item 16. But first I want to talk about a mountain of dirt. Franklin Mountain has definitely put its namesake on FM 1984. The new Franklin Mountain of Dirt is definitely over 15 feet high, which is over the limit of fill in the smart development agreement. I spoke with city managers in the engineering department and cannot get a definite answer if piling multiple massive mountains of dirt was against city code. Not to mention why the developer is moving dirt on the fire station property that was donated to the city. When I asked engineering why Franklin Mountain was moving dirt on city property, they told me that they were unaware of any agreements for the developer to be doing construction on city property. If there's any way to get clarification on what is going on, that would be helpful. Well, sending a 12 hours of beep, beep, beep from road and watershed construction from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM nonstop every single day makes living here less enjoyable. Regarding Agenda Item 16 and the guiding principles, there's a specific bullet point under the Economic Development heading that needs to be removed. It states, quote, "Support the developments on and near the San Marcos Regional Airport, FM 110, and adjacent railroad, which will provide intermodal freight capacity and a key link to the national transportation infrastructure, as well as bring thousands of jobs to the area." The people have never been in favor of this development. As representatives as the citizens of San Marcos, why do you continue to ignore us and push for something that our community and neighbors do not support? It continues to be obvious that the city blindly favors the smart access terminal despite there being no actual hard copy 3D agreements, no public partnerships, and no real promise from the developer to bring illusionary high pain or decent jobs. Since Scarborough Lane, aka Franklin Mountain, has purchased and added on to equate nearly 2,100 acres of land intended for heavy industrial use less than a football field away from the San Marcos River, they continue to operate under the guise of bringing anything substantial that the community supports. Please remove this item from the document in its entirety. And I also encourage you, each of you, to drive down Highway 80 and look at the new mountains on FM 1984. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Virginia Parker. Is she here? Uh, then following her would be Lisa Marie Capoletta online. Is she there? Okay, Ms. Capoletta.
Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. There are individuals in this world who will always give truth to power. And then there are those who will crumble and take the least line of resistance or worse yet, are corrupt with a financial angle. Item 20, the caption is not correct. It is Tantra Brew House LLC. How will the check be cut? The sign says Tantra Coffee House. The legal name is not congruent with the sign, which is not congruent with the caption. Is the noise a problem? Yes or no? And I'm also wondering, is the music too loud and disruptive? Yes or no? Now, we know that 70 decibels is harmful to children. And if the answer is yes, why are you giving them their money back? He did not heed the three times that we had his PD, San Marcos PD, come out. We had Neighborhood Services come out and then also Planning Commission contacted him. He did not speak at the zoning commission meeting. He did not speak last week. There were falsehoods told on social media, quite frankly, online bullying. There were falsehoods told in the press and in these chambers. Why was the decibel reader kept at the police department? Because by the time the PD finishes their call and then drives over to the police department and gets the decibel reader and then drives back to Tantra, there is no band. When a complaint is there, San Marcos PD cannot get there in time. Just because it cannot get there in time does not mean there's not a problem. You guys had police there last week, but you didn't have them speak when Tantra Brew House was on the agenda. There were two corporals, in fact, that were ready to testify. Why was that information not in the packet? That Neighborhood Services, as well as PD and Planning Department talked to them. Is this by design? Does planning want to chill the voices of activists? Is this by design? Does the city management team want to blur the lines between downtown and surrounding neighborhoods for money for city coffers? Do you want online bullying? Because not a dang one of you guys stood up and talked about how trash talk that was. I followed the rules. I was told I had to call the police department and I refused. And then I was a target online. What does this say about your leadership style? That was not placed in the packet and then not a dang one of you stood up for the neighbors? Because you know there are people that were happy with that decibel reading. Is it really appropriate to have loud noise in the HEB parking lot? Is it really appropriate to blur the boundaries between the downtown and neighborhoods? Is this the downtown you want? You guys buried the evidence. You allowed Tantra to spin a false narrative and now you are giving them their money back. Congrats on promoting an entitlement paradigm. And I'm especially disappointed in those of you who purport to stand up for the oppressed because you crumbled and you did not speak to power. Thank you for your time and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Max Field Baker, but following him will be Yancey Arvalo, Roland Sauseto, and James Reese. Mr. Baker. Okay, then... Yancey Arvalo, is she here? Yeah, I thought I saw her earlier.
Hello, council. My name is Yancey Arvalo and I am here as Chair of the Human Services Advisory Board. So as you may know, this board meets for three months to review and discuss human services funding applications and recommend funding to city council. So I joined last year and I am on my second term. But being on this board has really opened my eyes to how much need there is for social services here in San Marcos for our community. So for both last term and this current term, we as a board decided that funding would be focused on the following three: food, housing, and children. And I feel that given the budget, $550,000, we did our best to recommend funding for programs that best impact the people of San Marcos. But... Our budget is not enough. Even though this board has received funding for the last 15 years, based on the budget that we've received for the last 15 years, I feel like the people's need has not really been a priority for this city. We did get one year of COVID funds where our budget totaled almost over a million dollars. And last year, we did receive ARPA money of $100,000, which we did not receive this year and it seems we are not getting any for next year. We're getting more and more people, more organizations apply for funding. Last year, I believe we had 32, something around that number, and this year we have 37. And unfortunately, not everyone is guaranteed funding, either at their ask, their maximum ask, or even their minimum ask, which is very unfortunate because these organizations that are applying for this funding need funding to continue their programs, to continue paying their people, to continue providing services for the people and children of San Marcos. So this year, our top three fundings, maximum funding was focused on food. We recognize that there is a great need for food, especially as our population keeps increasing. But we also focused on children and housing. But again, please just, if we can find a way to fund, put more money into this budget so that we can actually create more of an impact for the people of San Marcos, you know, that would be amazing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Roland Sauseto.
Roland Sauseto, I don't have to say my address anymore. So I'm here to speak about Item 15. I'm here to speak to you as a former treasurer for Salvation Army for many years. And I saw that they would not be receiving any funding. And I would like to humbly ask y'all to please reconsider and see about allocating some funding to Salvation Army. Salvation Army has been a very important emergency resource for our citizens for many years. They do great work and I would truly appreciate if y'all would reconsider and think about reallocating some money to them. Thank you very much. Thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is James Reese.
Hello. I'm here to speak about, pardon me, about Item 10. That's where y'all have been leasing that property located halfway located upon Union Pacific Railroad tracks. They're at the intersection of LBJ and Edward Garrett. It used to be called the Dixie Creek. And a couple of years ago, you passed that on to Mr. Becerra. Then you forgave a lot of his rental debts that he rang up without paying you. And now you want to renew that lease. I'm here to admonish you. You step into this and I'm going to step in after you with a lawsuit. If you want to get into a joint venture with Union Pacific Railroad, then go ahead and do this because Union Pacific Railroad has no authority to let anybody into that building for which their property line crosses right through it in the middle of it. 50% of it is still owned by Union Pacific. And now the other 50% allegedly is occupied by permission of city council whereby Ruben Becerra rents it out to whoever will have it under the basis of some kind of lawful operation. I've provided you four exhibits in support of reasons why you should not get involved in this scheme. And among the five, I believe Mr. Aguirre should devote his attention to all of them, for which reasons I can show you that, one, you say this is a lease of real property. It's not a lease of real property. It's a lease of improved property. There's a difference. Improved property has a building on it. You're leasing buildings here and not bare ground. In truth, this is a lease of improved property that does have buildings which are provided to privileged persons through a scheme that prevents the public from being able to lease those buildings otherwise through a competitive bidding required under chapters 252 and 272 of the Local Government Code. So who pays the property taxes in this so-called ground lease scheme? Normally, the person who leases the property pays the taxes. But under terms of this deal, nobody pays taxes because the city here is claiming these buildings serve a governmental function of the city and thus are exempt from tax. It's a proprietary scheme that y'all own these buildings under, not a governmental scheme. And proprietary properties are owed taxes to the state by you guys. You want to get off into that tax fraud, I'll be in behind you. You're providing these improved properties to all of these people, especially Ruben Becerra. And by getting into this for lease of a building located halfway upon Union Pacific property and halfway on city property, the city council thus is entering into a joint venture with Union Pacific constructively, which is a matter of well-settled law, waives your immunity against suit in this matter. So as I stated, you're in point number N. A couple of months ago, you and the city council took $50,000 of taxpayer money and gave it to an outside law firm for the express purpose of defending yourselves against the next lawsuit that I bring, James Reese. I'm going to bring another one.
Ms. Reese, your time is up.
Oh, by the way.
And your time is up.
Mr. Case would not let me speak at the last meeting.
Mr. Reese, your time to speak is up. Please sit down.
No, ma'am.
And no more words. You may exit if you wish.
Yeah.
Okay. And Ms. Trevino, that was the last person, correct, to sign up to speak? Okay, in that case, we will go to our consent agenda. The following ordinances, resolutions, et cetera, numbered 1 through 13, may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussions is necessary unless the council member chooses to pull one of these items.
Pull Item 10, ma'am.
Mr. Scott would like to pull Item 10.
Uh, I'd like to pull Item Number 5.
Ms. Rodriguez wants to pull Item 5. Anybody else? Okay, then I would accept a motion to approve 1 through 4,
so moved.
6 through 9, and 11 through 13.
So moved.
And we'll give that one to Mr. Mendoza. Is there a second? And I'll give that one to Ms. Garza. Ms. Trevino, we will vote on the ones we did not pull.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mary Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and usually we will go to the public hearings next and do the pulled items after. But since we don't have any public hearings, we will do the items that were pulled first. So that's going to be, the first one will be Number 5.
Consider approval of Resolution 2024-235R approving one, a change in services to the agreement with Sunrise Rehab and Recovery, DBA Evoc Wellness San Marcos, that provides a substance use treatment program for qualified adults identified through the Police Department's Mental Health Diversion Program for the purpose of increasing funding from $99,000 to $150,000 of American Rescue Plan Act funds. And two, an amendment to the scope of services exhibited to said agreement authorized by the city manager or designated to execute any documents to implement said changes and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Ms. Rodriguez, your questions?
Mm-hmm. So thank you to City Manager Anderson for answering most of these questions. Um, is there somebody here from Evoc?
There is not.
Okay. Uh, mainly a lot of my questions were around the scope of services just because that portion of our packet is not very hefty. And so it would have been nice to speak to the people that we are actually granting the money to. So they're not even online?
They are not.
Is this normal practice or...? Because they weren't at the last one either.
Uh, not always. I would say it's often that the contractor is not here. I mean, sometimes they are, but generally not, Ms. Reyes?
Well, I think it's also because we didn't, we didn't get the original contract. So like, it didn't come to us initially. So I don't know if y'all met with Evoc, but...
Um, Mr. Anderson, can you speak to that a little bit? There was some meetings with Evoc?
Yes, so, yeah, so there were meetings with the Evoc staff to talk about the scope of services. In the email that I put together and the team here put together, we tried to outline much of the services that they would be rendering. And so hopefully that answered most of the questions. But just from a general practice, even prior to getting here, typically the contractor, who we're doing the contract with is not at the meeting, unless it's specifically requested to.
Well, okay, so I'll narrow the scope of my questions then. Um, so the last time you spoke to us, Chief, you, I asked you, I posed the question on who conducts the financial assessment. In that original hearing, you had mentioned that the police department would in fact conduct that financial assessment. But in inquiring again, SMPD apparently does not perform a financial assessment as the contract had outlined. So when y'all see somebody in crises, what's the, what's the general process? Can y'all walk us through what typically that looks like?
Sure. I'm going to turn that over to Corporal Osborne, but let me give you a little bit of background on Evoc. When the behavioral advisory team met and we solidified the five goals, the first goal was we wanted a diversion center. We want to divert people away from incarceration to services. We do not have a brick and mortar behavioral health center in San Marcos. Everybody knows that. Randy Foken, at the time, was employed by pre-trial services. We now call that judicial services. Randy is the one that was familiar with Evoc Wellness. And so he facilitated a meeting with Judge Elaine Brown and I. We actually met with their point of contact, Mr. Sean Flynn. We met on several occasions. We actually went over to the facility. We better understood the behavioral health component. They can treat behavioral health. We think behavioral health, think substance use, which may have co-occurring mental health. So that's what we're referring to. So there were multiple meetings with Evoc. The behavioral advisory team ultimately said, this is a really good idea. The county went first. The county earmarked $50,000 of ARPA funds. So the mental health program, the court chaired by Judge Brown, they could send persons to that. Additionally, Evoc stepped forward and said, we'll give you five scholarships for persons residing here. And then I came to ultimately to the council and it was one of your all's budget points where we allocated $550,000 from ARPA to go ahead and move forward with Evoc Wellness. So we did. The initial execution, because we had a critical client who needed services right then, who is indigent, the initial execution with Evoc Wellness was to the tune of $99,000. That doesn't necessitate council approval. We knew eventually we would be here because the total amount of money allocated was $150,000. $100,000 is the threshold which council has to approve. So that's actually why we're coming back to you. But Corporal Osborne can speak to your questions specifically.
Good evening. I think I can probably just get right to the scope of what I think you're trying to ask or what you're looking for maybe with your question, which is if someone has their own insurance that may pay for that, would these dollars be going towards it? That answer is no. The financial assessment, as far as what we do in the field, is do you have insurance of your own? Like you asked about if someone was in crisis. And if the person does have insurance, then what we'll do is we'll typically try to find them a facility that accepts their insurance. And typically on the mental health unit, what we're dealing with is a mental health crisis. And so we'll attempt to find a facility that accepts their health insurance. And if there's no medical need for them to go to the hospital, we'll take them directly to that facility. As Chief mentioned, those facilities aren't located in San Marcos, so it may be Austin or San Antonio or something like that. The clients that we've sent to Evoc are people who do not have their own health insurance or they have no financial means in order to pay for their treatment there. And so that's the people that we've used, what Chief called the scholarship. And they've been accepted and those dollars have paid for their treatment there.
On the, so I guess that's, that's kind of where I was going. So when I saw the scholarships that were to be offered only being five, um, and you're saying that often, and correct me if I'm wrong, the clients that y'all are taking there are in fact indigent?
Yes, the two, well, the two clients that we've referred there for those specific funds, one was homeless, yes, and the other one was kind of transitioning out of losing their housing. So they were both indigent in San Marcos. And these were both cases where they're generating a lot of calls for service in the city. And so they were really needing help, as Chief mentioned, quickly. And neither one had health insurance that would cover it. And substance abuse was their primary problem. And as Chief mentioned, the co-occurring mental health disorders can be part of that as well. But substance abuse is the primary issue for them. And so that's why those funds were used for those cases.
And in the case, there was no more scholarships available? Somebody's indigent, y'all make contact on the streets. This person meets all the signs for needing services at this particular place. But all of the scholarships have been, you know, they're taken. What happens in that, in that instance?
We wouldn't be able to refer them to that facility because they only operate on insurance or in this case, this scholarship money.
And, and when y'all actually engage with people on the ground, how many people do y'all find actually have insurance and the ability to pay?
That's a really hard question to answer. Sometimes it seems like we run into a lot of people in a row that don't have insurance. And sometimes it seems like we run into a lot of people in a row that do. So I wouldn't feel real comfortable saying anything more than like half and half of the people that we deal with. That half of them do have their own insurance and half don't.
Mm-hmm. And what happens like in the case, somebody's experiencing crises? Y'all can't really, y'all aren't able to actually have that thorough conversation that you may be needing to then go and take this person to... What typically happens in those instances?
So in a mental health crisis like that, you're saying that we're not really able to ascertain if they have insurance or anything like that? We handle it a couple of different ways. Sometimes if the person is in need of medical attention, then we'll take them to the local hospital, Chris's Santa Rosa, and then they'll receive the medical treatment that they need. And then later on, once they've received that medical treatment, they'll receive a mental health evaluation from a licensed mental health professional or a qualified mental health professional. And then that professional will decide if they need additional treatment somewhere else. And then sometimes what we'll do if they don't need... And then sometimes, um, what we'll do if they don't need medical treatment is sometimes if, as long as they are cooperative with us and we can safely do so, we'll take them back to the police department where we have our co-responder conduct a screening on them, um, to determine if they need that additional mental health treatment, like at a short-term residential facility, or a short-term inpatient facility, and then if they don't have insurance, they don't have the financial means to pay for it, um, then she can apply on their and our behalf, uh, for the, for the bed to be paid for by Hill Country, which is the local mental health authority. And so then if that's approved and granted, uh, then we tr, we transport the person to the facility after that.
Okay. And then, um, in your experience, when people are leaving this facility, no matter duration of stay, what does the, what does the re-entry process back into society look like for them?
Uh, I can't speak to that because I'm not, of course, any of their caseworkers or anything like that, but, um, typically, generally speaking, as far as like planning for someone to be discharged, I would defer to you on that. That's okay, just to kind of generally speak about with them.
So every facility is gonna have a different process, of course, um, but typically you're in me with a case manager and have a discharge planning. Anywhere you go, if we're talking about substance use treatment or emergency psychiatric facility, that starts day one. What are your goals when you get out of here? Where do you want to go? Who are your support people? And it's getting them, reconnected to them, making sure that's a safe place for them to go, and then they can return home. Some of the psychiatric facilities will offer transportation back to San Marcos, others will ask family or friends to come pick them up. There's been occasions where we have offered, or I have offered for them, the, uh, mental health officers to assist with that. And with Evoque specifically, and others, long-term substance use programs, more than just a week, they may discharge to sober living, maybe they need more intensive treatment or longer treatment that Evoque Wellness can't offer. They may, um, go to a partial inpatient program. There's a lot of different places that they would discharge to.
Would you say, though, a lot of that, a lot of that process relies on having, somebody having some support system? So if somebody has no one to call, no address to go back to, no money to actually, you know, come back to, what does that experience look like for them?
Yeah, let me, I guess I should introduce myself first. My name's Kelly Castillo. Um, I work with Hill Country MHDD. I'm the co-responder with the San Marcos Police Department Mental Health Unit, um, Qualified Mental Health Professional. So to speak to your question about, what if they don't have anyone or anywhere to go? That's where that case manager discharge planner, that's where they need to get to work and figure out shelters available. Um, for example, Hill Country has an in-house crisis stabilization unit in Kerrville. Um, we work closely with them since they're in-house. They have list and list of resources to connect people to all over the state, and so, um, sometimes there's a shelter in Kerrville or San Antonio or Austin, and then they, they make sure they have a bed available wherever they are going, not just, we'll just drop you off at the front door, good luck. They, that's part of being a discharge planner, is to make sure that they have a seamless transition to not end back, end up in homelessness, whether for the first time or returning into homelessness. Of course, people are gonna choose what they want to do, the, they could walk away from those options or say, no, I want to be back on the street, but that's where free will, and of course, person-centered treatment comes into the conversation.
Thank you. And how long have you been in, like, just not necessarily in this role, but practicing around this, this field?
Sure. Um, I graduated in twenty eighteen with my master's in social work from Texas State.
Oh, cool.
Um, I worked with Hill Country before, right after I graduated, in Kamal County, uh, on their mobile crisis outreach team, and then I've done a variety of jobs after there. I was an administrator of a respite home, and then I worked in homeless shelters in New Braunfels, both the men and women's side, for a few years, and then this position came up, and I happily, uh, applied very quickly.
And in your tenure, have you noticed this crises, um, get worse? Has it exacerbated? Do you find more people needing services than before?
Oh, um, yes and no. That's a hard que, because it, it's kind of what, what, uh, what area are you talking about?
I guess indigent services specifically.
Yeah. I think the need is, I, I would have to look at the numbers, of course, but I, I don't know if the need is rising more as more help is becoming available, and people are saying, oh, where have you been? I needed you, or I needed, uh, a facility, or I needed people like you to help me out. So, um, I wouldn't, I don't know if it's rising or not, but it, I know more people are wanting to help those who are indigent, and those services are becoming more available, which I think is great, and people are getting their needs met more, so.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to, uh, Ms. Reyes, if we can have, I don't know if it's plausible, uh, but I really had questions regarding the scope of services and what is available for people. I would have liked a representative to be here to, to discuss more about that, and so I don't know if it's plausible at a later date, um, if the council so moves to decide to move forward with this, if we can have that meeting, just so we, as a body, can better understand what's happening on their side of things.
I think that we can definitely work with them if y'all would like to do a work session, you know, that would kind of go through, uh, their processes and things like that. We would just need to work with them on, on the content of what that looks like, um, so that, that, that could be what we could do, is try to do some type of work session in the future, if the council would like to do that.
Thank you both, too, uh, for your responses and your work.
And Councilwoman, if I could real quick add, just because it is related to the agenda as item, good news is, um, the local mental health authority, Hill Country is, has hired or in the process of hiring four additional QMHPs, Qualified Mental Health Professionals. Two will specifically help with the outreach and the transition from incarceration back into community, and then two will actually be in the community trying to prevent crisis, kind of like what this co-responder unit does as well. So there's a lot of movement there. And then one final good piece, we have, uh, within the behavioral advisory team, a subcommittee working specifically on what's called JBCR, Jail Base Competency Restoration, because we do not want people languishing in jail until they're deemed competent. Our goal, if I could be so grandiose, would be to have JBCR operational sometime in the month of May twenty twenty-five. Kamal County is just now rolling theirs out, and their goal is to have eight beds in their JBCR program.
Regarding the re-entry services you just mentioned, because that was a question I posted on the message board, um, when you say post-incarceration, is it incarceration in TDC or incarceration including here in our jail?
Our jail.
Okay, so not TDC?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. That was all I had.
So, anyone else?
I guess will you go around the table, Mayor, at, at the appropriate?
I'm sorry, I cannot hear you.
Would you go around the table at the appropriate time to let us know about whether to do that work session on, uh, with Evoque in the future?
I can, is your microphone on? I can, I can barely hear you. Okay. Um, Council, what about the work session that Ms. Reyes just referenced?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Scott? He's, okay. Uh, Ms. Garza? I would say I think we could all learn a lot, is my opinion, and, and, yes.
Yes.
Okay. I have a question, and I'm gonna note that I, I think my questions on the message board somehow got missed, so I'm still asking where the fifty-one thousand is coming from, if it's ARPA dollars. Anyway, uh, Chief, how many people can be served through this contract?
That's a great question. The, all of the money that's been requested is coming from ARPA. Council did initially earmark a hundred and fifty thousand specific to this cause.
Okay.
So we're just asking for that additional fifty-one thousand to bring us to the total net one hundred and fifty thousand. How many clients will it actually serve? Every one of them is different. Some of them need different level of detoxification services versus inpatient versus outpatient therapy. So we have found, just in the two that Corporal Osborne referenced, each one of them comes at a different price line. So I can't give you a, a number, but if, if I had to, most of them are averaging ten to fifteen to seventeen thousand dollars per person.
Because I heard something about five scholarships, and I don't know what you mean by scholarships?
So in addition to what the county's doing and what the city's doing with our ARPA funds, Evoque said, we want to be a good community partner as well. In addition to your dollars that you're gonna kick in, we'll give you five scholarships.
So that's five additional on top of the hundred and fifty grand?
On top of the ARPA dollars, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that's for this year?
That's, yes, for twenty twenty-four. That, I have not engaged them yet for twenty twenty-five to see how many scholarships they'll give. And to be candid, I may not even be aware of one of their scholarships, because that's not gonna necessarily be funneled through us.
Somewhere along the line, we're gonna know if we're paying for that, that set of services. Somebody's gonna know, correct? Somebody?
The scholarships are on their dime.
I understand that, but you just said you may not know for any particular client if, if it's on their dime or ours.
No, we know on ours, so we get a control number. So let's say zero, zero, nine receives services.
Mm-hmm.
We don't, for hip reasons, we don't need to know all the specific demographics. We'll get an invoice, and then Tammy pays those invoices upon receipt.
And if we have someone that we know receives services and we don't get an invoice, we would think that's one of the scholarships?
Well, yeah, there would be communication between Tammy and Corporal Osborne. I mean, they're, they're talking constantly. This, this is new, but if you think about the alternative, is to put them in jail? Nobody wants that.
Right. And let the record show, I did not say anything about going there in this conversation.
Yes, ma'am.
Just, let's not, let's not do that. Um, no, I'm, I'm fully in, in support of the, the, the whole concept and the program, uh, but one of the things we have to do up here is looking at dollars, and so I wanted to make sure that understood what the scholarships was, and I think that somebody's gonna know if that came out of, off, from their dime or ours, so somebody will figure that out.
Right.
Okay, so I get that it's not a set fee, but for, there's something about the five that, when you were answering her question, it sounded like we were limited to five throughout this whole contract. So that's why I was asking, but I'm good now.
I think the five was referenced was the scholarships.
Right. But somewhere along the line, it sounded like we would only have five, which wasn't making sense to me. That's why I asked the question.
You're right.
Okay, so...
I have a quick question.
Go.
So it kind of piggybacks off of the mayor's comments, so, um, the question of whether the need for programs like this, uh, it like, uh, folks are wondering, is the need rising, right? Um, and how we measure impact? It's, it's come up in a lot of, uh, spaces and places, a lot that we're in together, like the Mental Health Coordinating Committee, the Homeless Coalition and whatnot. Um, and I know it's difficult to answer right now, but, um, I think that's why we need program evaluation metrics. Like, are we capturing the number of individuals served, the treatment completion rates, and other outcome indicators? Like, how are we capturing that and how will it be reported back to us? And I think it's really important that we have that, um, just for like future policy decisions, because I think this conversation of mental health and diverting people from jails has gained a lot of momentum, and I think it would empower us, um, to better advocate for some of these creative solutions if we had that. So I'm just wondering, is there anything like written into this program that you all have to like intentionally and meaningfully capture that data?
Yeah, so it's a great question. It's actually the fourth goal of the behavioral advisory team, because here's the problem with the data from our perspective. Corporal Osborne, at the end of the year, is gonna give us a report that's gonna say how many mental health calls we had, how many committals we had, how many people were taken. He can give you all those numbers. What we don't know is the touchpoints associated with the county jail.
Right.
CSR, the local mental health authority. What do all the other stakeholder entities, what are they doing? We don't have that data. There is no single repository.
Right.
So that's the fourth articulated goal for the behavioral advisory team. Um, that is actually being overseen currently by Greg Cox. Greg Cox is the First Assistant District Attorney. We've had three stakeholder meetings. I have learned that it involves technology as it relates to IT and multiple systems to include CSR, so I, I'm out of my depth already. I'll just tell you that your question is a good one, and we're already working on it, but I'm not gonna give you a, a short promise, because it's, it's probably gonna be an investment.
Is it, uh, accurate, or at least close to accurate, to say that we're doing our part in terms of serious San Marcos and this program? Like, I get, and I think it's super valid and really important to name, especially for our neighbors who are following this conversation, that we know that there isn't a single, like, hub of information sharing, but like, minimum, through programs like this, we're doing our part in collecting data that might be helpful to contribute to the overall conversation.
Yes, and you and I know that the, the hope behind that is newly hired Matthew Gonzalez.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, he is your behavioral health employee for this, uh, county of Hays.
Mm-hmm.
He's doing a phenomenal job. We believe that that data and those metrics should reside within the Health Department.
Okay.
And so Matthew is taking point on that.
Awesome. Yeah, I just think, thank you, uh, for all the information. I think it's important for us to name that, that has been brought up a lot, which is why we invested in like our research person, um, who lives in here with y'all's department and all these other people. So, okay, thank you.
Questions up here? Mr. Venio, we're ready to vote now.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr., I'm sorry, sorry. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we're on to item ten.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash two forty-eight R approving a ground lease agreement with Basera Corp. to lease city-owned property located at two zero one South LBJ Drive for a term of thirteen months authorized in city manager or designated to negotiate final terms and conditions related to use of the property as a restaurant and to execute said lease agreement on behalf of the city, authorizing sublease of the property and declare an effective date.
Most to deny. Let me a second.
Is there a second to the motion to deny? If not, I would seek a motion to approve.
I'll, I'll second to discuss if, if...
Uh, I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve so we can get on table. You're ma, doing a second for purposes of discussion? Okay.
I have a lot of questions. Like, I, everything that our neighbor, uh, came and spoke about, I'm just very curious to what is going on. I don't even know where to start. I'm just like...
Sure. Sean Condor, the Director of Engineering and Capital Approvements. I've got Cory Lime, our real estate manager, online. Was there a specific question that, I didn't hear a specific question?
We, we gotta have a, let's go all the way back.
Sure.
To purchasing.
Okay.
The, the property, what happened with, with the railroad and how this came about?
Sure.
I mean, I could go through it, but I, I'll, I'll let staff do that.
I'll, I'll speak to that briefly, just because, uh, I think Mr. Condor was, especially at that time, was in the engineering world, and Mr. Lime wasn't here at the time, and everyone involved, in fact, is pretty much gone, uh, but at, in twenty thirteen, the city acquired, um, a tract of land owned by Union Pacific Railroad, and it was for a potential, possible, you know, light rail or high-speed rail stop of some, I can't remember, was it Lone Star or some name for it, but, uh...
Lone Star Rail was the concept at the time.
Yeah, and the idea was, there was already a platform, and so we bought that land for that purpose at that time.
We need to back up even further.
Yes, ma'am.
That this was Union Pacific, they had this really wide railway easement, whatever, they decided to divest themselves of part of that and made a whole bunch of land available to the city, and we bought several properties. Is that correct?
Yes, uh, within that purchase, there were four leases, I believe, uh, three or four leases, and those leases, which is typical when you buy real estate, you can assign those leases, uh, and we can accept the, the assigned leases, or we could, of course, terminate the leases, but, uh, it was decided to keep those leases going until such time as, you know, the city may have uses, of course, in the future. One of the assigned leases is this lease, um, with Basera Corp. It's an interesting situation, because, um, if we're trying to get into the history, the building was owned by the business.[1739.83] The building was owned by the business. I think Dixie Cream was there at one time. At some point, Mr. Basera and his affiliated entities acquired that that building. Just as a piece of personal property, the building, and then continued a ground lease with Union Pacific. When that lease was assigned, Union Pacific, they, and if you've ever dealt with the railroads. Railroads kind of have a tendency to do things their own way. And the way they wanted to sell off the land, the boundary of that ran right through the middle of this building, okay? And we asked Union Pacific to carve out the building either all on their side or all on our side. Either way, pretty much works. And I said, well, we, the guy I remember talking to me actually said, no, we we've done this plenty of times. We're just gonna run it right down the middle. So anyways, perfectly fine. We have an arrangement with. The way it works is half the building is on Union Pacific, half of the building is on city property. If Union Pacific were to terminate its lease, which by the way, they have the right to terminate with thirty days' notice. It would trigger an automatic termination of our lease as well. And that is sort of the arrangement. So right now, both the city and Union Pacific benefit because it's instead of having idle property. It's property that's occupied with a business and generates some income for the city. So that lease arrangement has been going on since twenty thirteen. And now we are simply at a point of renewing this lease for, I believe, about another year and a half under the proposed term through twenty six. It may be two years.
January thirteen months.
Yeah, two years. So that's that's what the proposal is right now, is a continuation continuation of that lease. And it's, of course, at the council's discretion either way.
Can you fill in also about the backstories of money that's owed to the city that wasn't paid? Situations like that, lawsuits, profitable lawsuits that could have been generated?
I don't know anything about a lawsuit. I just remember the council in, boy, I wanna say twenty seventeen or eighteen renewed the lease.
It's been a while, but there is some confusion because originally it was Mr. Anderson with Dixie Cream Donuts. And somewhere during all this other stuff, he sold the building to Mr. Basera.
Correct.
And so that it it got very confusing.
Yeah, and that's a part I'm just simply not familiar with. And again, as a reminder, the building is owned separately. Now, in reality, as in practical reality, I suppose in theory, the building can be removed. In practical reality, I don't know if that will actually happen if, once the lease ends, of course, that's to be seen.
Yeah, there was stuff that happened quite a long time ago, but since then, the lease has been paid and now the and the leases have expired and.
It's simply a matter if if we'd like to continue it for another two years or not.
Year and a month.
Year, I'm sorry, yes.
When we discussed this earlier this year, were we informed that at the end of this lease, we will not be renewing the lease?
I don't know if, well, I don't know if there's been any formal decision, one or the other. It simply is the lease ends at that time unless in a year and a month, this council or decides they wanna continue it. It's really, at the council at that time, it's your discretion and, of course, the tenant, if they're interested in continuing that lease.
colleagues, I I guess I remember us discussing this because we were all kind of on the same page as Mr. Scott when we first started discussing this. But then we realized there is a current renter in that building. And I guess we were kinda sitting there wondering what happens to that tenant.
And they have since left and another tenant.
Yeah, somebody else kinda got in there. What would be the result if we tonight denied this?
If if you deny tonight, they would have to vacate the premises. You typically would give them at least thirty days to vacate. So that's.
Is with Basera Corporation, there's someone else who's leasing from them.
That's correct, yes, ma'am. And the sublease takes, when a sublease takes a property like this. They take it subject to the terms of the existing lease. So they're on notice of the terms of the existing lease legally, and that is.
Do you have a copy of that existing lease between them?
I I do not.
I think we asked for that for the last time we talked.
I don't, I don't have that.
That's what I'm getting to with that is, is there a way that?
Yeah.
That's between them.
Yeah, we asked if we can get it. I remember that specifically. Is there a way the city can just lease it to the person that's renting it right now? And just if we don't, if we don't approve this, and it goes against.
That would be a a council decision. Yes, that's right. So that's that is a complication.
Bought it from Dan Anderson, yeah.
So it does create a bit of a rub there. So he's the owner, and it's, again, a highly unusual situation. It's it's a ground lease with the the building on top of it. And so that's that's the tricky part.
Cut off is if Union Pacific cut it off.
Oh, yes, at any time, if Union Pacific decides they wanna terminate, the the lease would have to terminate. Just by, as a, just to be practical about it, you can't have a half building. Where half of it is demolished.
There's some funky about what happens to the building, too.
That's what I was asking, what half does he own?
I'm sorry, sir.
What hap- what what half does he own? If they decide they don't want that half, I think I just tear it down.
The whole building, right?
Right, as a practical matter, it's it's a it's an all or nothing proposition with the building. It's either gotta be. Yeah, and and so our lease would terminate if that lease terminates. And vice versa, as a matter of fact, with Union Pacific, if we were to terminate, they would have the right as well if they want to.
How long is Union Pacific's lease on this compared to ours?
Well, Union Pacific, basically, the way the way they operate is they have a three percent escalator. And it just continues, and for them, the way they work is they like all of these leases because all across the country, it generates millions of dollars. Because of the volume, so bottom line for them is they have a thirty-day notice of termination. So the practical answer is that they, their lease term is thirty days unless they continue to keep keep going. But if, in theory, they could terminate next month.
So if 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 we terminate the lease on our side, and Ruben owns the building, he's just renting the ground space, I take it?
That's correct.
Okay, so at that point, if we terminate, he gets to take his building and move it somewhere else?
In theory, but I I don't know how movable that building is in the economics, but yes, legally, that that would be his option. Practical, I don't know. Legally, that's correct. He would have to move the building if. Or abandon it in place so, and then we could clear the site. It's one of the two options.
Could we make it very clear tonight, let's say we do approve this lease, could we make it very clear that that is the end of the lease? In thirteen months, there's no renewal, there's no coming back. This is it. Hey, heads up, we giving you notice.
Well, I I guess the only thing I'd say about that is the lease says that right now. It it just has a termination.
Is the end of the lease.
And and I, it's difficult for a current council to bind the future council, even if you're, it's the same seven members. What the decision point would be at that time is whether you might have a change of heart.
But I think the question might be, is there any kind of auto-renewal set in the lease? And I'm hearing, no, the lease ends at the end of January twenty twenty six.
That's correct. And Mr. Lime is on the line, if he, if I'm recalling incorrectly. Need to pull it up, but I believe it's just a set termination.
Yes, Sam, the way the lease is drafted is it has a hard stop on the end of January twenty twenty six. And that termination date is tied to the sublease date that Basera has with his current tenant, San Marcos Coffee LLC.
Um, oh, sorry. So I guess some of my questions are just like, our neighbor provided this handout with some comments, questions, concerns. And I think that that has led me to more questions and concerns. So when he's talking about the, wait, did you hear his commentary, right? So to me, it's like, what does he mean when he talks about the difference between real and improved property? And is that something that y'all have talked about and unpacked? It's like, is that a valid concern?
I think that's gonna be a legal question, and I don't know if, and we've had one executive session on these leases. And if if you feel the need to go in, or I can try and answer your questions here if you'd like. Just as a quick answer, I'm not aware of any issue here. It's releasing the land and there's there's a building on it. And we've got conditions for maintenance of the grounds, you know, no sign, no political signs are allowed, certain signage requirements. Standard lease terms for maintenance and upkeep and so forth.
Right. And for years, this was all Union Pacific land. And Dan Anderson, when he had Dixie Cream Donuts, was leasing on the building, was leasing the whole land.
That's correct.
Pacific for ever.
That is correct.
Union Pacific's on that land for a long time. And I agree, it would have been nice if they hadn't split that building. But they were going X feet from the tracks, I think, and that's just kinda where it landed.
Well, I've never been provided like a info snack sheet or something that breaks us down to where it captures all the historic lore. So to me, it's difficult to have this conversation. But I think just giving the longstanding and at times tense conversations surrounding this property and the lease agreement. It might be prudent to postpone, if that's possible, and have a more thorough conversation.
So that that is an option for council, so here's what that would mean. We are on a month to month, month to month lease currently, so that status could continue, kind of status quo. And we could, we would have to consider it, I guess, January. And we could also have a, an executive session if that was something council was interested.
I I just would like for us to have some specific direction because we did have an executive session and we got direction to go and negotiate what's in front of you. So, and we gave the history, so I just wanna make sure we know what additional information y'all need to make a policy decision, so we know how to prepare for that.
I think maybe somebody missed that executive session.
I think maybe explain it to me like a mindless child because I still don't understand. And the, there has never been like a written historic documentation of everything that's happened. And if I'm being really honest, this is one of those things that our neighbors see from the outside. And because they're not given an invitation to executive sessions, they might perceive this to be some kind of BFF bestie deal with the county judge, when that's not the case. And so I do think a lot of times in executive session even, there's stuff there that could be written out and given to us. That's not necessarily like top secret, legally protected type of thing, and we're not given that. So it's difficult for me to justify this stuff and then have all of these other questions, like.
Right, so one option, I guess, if we need, we have a pending motion, so one option is a motion to postpone with a second, and then we'd have a vote on that, and then if that carries, we'd move it to January, otherwise we, you know, we could. That that would be the option.
I'll second that that motion.
Oh, wait, I'll motion to postpone, sorry.
So motion by Ms. Garza, seconded by Ms. Rodriguez to postpone. Did that also request, include a request to do this in executive session? Can that be part of our motion, or can we just?
I think it's just understood that we'd probably wanna maybe have that.
So that's just a simple motion to postpone.
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be to the, I guess, what, first meeting in January?
I, there's no time to do this on January seventh, is there? I don't know what's on our schedule for work session for January seventh.
I have, I don't have the agenda in front of me to know how packed it is.
Uh, can we say in January and let staff figure out where where we have time? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I am, and.
So that way, depending on the schedule, be either first or second meeting in January, letting letting city manager look at the schedule. Okay.
Yeah, and and I understand, again, that there's some material that is presented in executive session that should, you know, just be there. But I do think even just, it's difficult for me to follow along conversations whenever we're, we don't have handouts. Like, we're allowed to take notes, but even that has come under scrutiny, like whenever I take notes. I just need there to be a way to get this information so that if and when neighbors do approach us. Like, if there's things that can be rebuttals to certain concerns, I can cite that. And not necessarily giving away like your top, you know, level secret, right, yeah. I'm not trying to steal the Constitution here, you guys, like.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone to one of our January meeting dates, letting staff determine where we would have time. Ms. Trevino, we're gonna vote on motion to postpone.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
The motion passes six to one.
Okay, and so that takes us to. Those were the only two that were pulled, correct? All right, then that takes us to number fourteen.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty four dash sixty one on the first of two readings, omitting chapter thirty nine of the San Marcos City Code regarding flood damage prevention by adopting the preliminary map revision to the flood insurance rate maps. Clarifying certain provisions and making revisions consistent with such adoption, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions and declare an effective date.
Okay, I need a motion to get this on the floor.
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Gleason, Ms., uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Scott, Mr. Gleason, did you say you seconded? You did?
No.
Okay, Mr. Mendoza, and that was to approve?
Yes.
Okay, that, we have it on on the floor. Is there, looks like there is a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Richard Reynosa, Assistant Director of Engineering, also the city's floodplain administrator. So the adoption of flood maps is a routine process. Our flood damage prevention ordinance, which is an amendment to the language within there, automatically adopts revisions to these maps that are issued by FEMA. But it's always been the city's practice to to amend our ordinance so that the dates reflected within there are based, are the effect of map dates. So it is a routine procedure, although I would say this has not been a routine process just because of the life of it. So where this started was back in twenty fourteen. The city of San Marcos was participating in updating models and studies with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority. The study, the study, the limits of the study went from the city of Gonzalez to upstream of the city of Blanco. So it's a significant undertaking and and went over this vast area. And then in twenty fifteen, as we all know, we had two significant floods, most notably the Memorial Day Flood. As part of that, the disaster declaration was 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 declared. And the Federal Emergency Management Association Agency FEMA stepped in and wanted to further these studies and issue advisory flood data information. That would assist with the recovery process, ensure that property owners, homeowners that were recovering, rebuilding, were building to the most accurate data, the most up-to-date data in that recovery process. So they weren't building to the same elevations where they saw flood damages. They were in, they were building to higher elevations to protect their properties from future flood events. So they stepped in, took those studies, took them further and progressed them to this advisory flood flood data. And following twenty fifteen, they were gonna take those updates through a whole map revision process, and that's what occurred after twenty fifteen. So by twenty seventeen, we got a draft preliminary maps that were released, updating these flood maps throughout the city. In twenty eighteen, Atlas fourteen was released. I'll I'll get into that a little bit more, but just as a timeline, Atlas fourteen was released in twenty eighteen. By the twen- by the end of twenty eighteen and into twenty nineteen, the physical map provisions were released. And basically, you go from your studies to releasing preliminary data. And then by the time you release the physical map revision, that's an, that's the update to the flood insurance rate map. And so in twenty nineteen, that that we're basically at a final product of the flood insurance rate maps. However, there were, since FEMA was leading it and their funding gets approved annually. There's, it was a slower process than what you would typically see in a map revision. This was spanning multiple counties. As a comparison, the updates within Caldwell County and Guadalupe County actually occurred in twenty twenty. It was the same study, same process that was going on at the time. They were just able to issue those maps in twenty twenty. Some of the delays, not only the funding side of things, there was some of the developable area within Hayes County affected some of the revisions. Also, they they identified some, I don't know if you wanna call them errors necessarily, but they they found some anomalies in the studies which didn't change the limits of the floodplain, but some of the underlying studies and and some of the studies that were being published with the maps had to go through some updates. And so that further delayed the process over time. And finally, here in twenty twenty four, we're getting released the. And finally, here in twenty twenty-four, we're getting released the Hayes County flood insurance rate maps. That will be effective in January twenty, uh, January seventeen, twenty twenty-five. Next slide, please. So flood insurance rate maps, what are these? These are, these are the maps that project the flood, floodplains throughout the city. These are issued by, again, FEMA, these are federally issued, these are, go through a federal process to update those maps. Our current maps are dated two thousand and five. That, that two thousand and five date is a little bit of a misleading note because a lot of the data behind that is nineteen ninety. So in two thousand and five, all our flood maps were digitized, and that's where the effect of two thousand and five map came. We adopt these flood insurance rate maps because we participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. The city has rules and regulations that we enforce related to how you develop, how you do improvements within the floodplain, and all of these are, are part of that program to ensure that we minimize or avoid any losses due to flooding over time. And, and part of that, we also adopt the flood maps over that period. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, you know, what's changed, so again, the two thousand and five maps, they're based on nineteen ninety data. The two thousand and five date is just when it was digitized. So we were dealing with our previous maps, very old information, very old data. So this undertaking included significant updates to the hydrology, hydrology and hydraulic studies over the area. When FEMA took it over from the GBRA, we were able to incorporate all of San Marcos rivers and creeks. At the time that we were just participating with, with GBRA, it was primarily the Blanco River Basin, some, some of the San Marcos River. So we were fortunate to ha, have them include all of San Marcos in an update in these maps. So it is a, a physical map revision, it's replacing the entire flood insurance rate map covering San Marcos. So it's a vast improvement of the data that we have. Again, the studies were updated, the modeling improvements over that time have been vastly different. So the, the maps that we're getting issued is, is, is as up to date as they can be based on those studies. I will say, now, I mentioned Atlas fourteen, that was issued in twenty eighteen, updated rainfall precipit, precipitation intensities, and, and that changes how these studies, the underlying information in these studies. So Atlas fourteen has been a variable, when I mentioned in twenty eighteen it came in, FEMA was already so far down the process, they were not able to incorporate Atlas fourteen at that time. So we're always, we're always playing catch-up in this process. We're always trying to use the best available information. Our flood ordinance, as it's written, gives us the ability to regulate based on the best available information. So when this, these maps, when the preliminary maps were issued in twenty seventeen, we were already regulating development based on that information. Like the advisory data that was issued, we're having homeowners build to a, to a higher elevation that was previously issued. And, and again, as the twenty seventeen update was, occurred in subsequent updates, we, we've always been enforcing those standards. So what is being mapped now, and the maps becoming effective through FEMA, we've been, we've been regulating development this whole time based on that newer data. And even subsequently, since Atlas fourteen has been issued, we've been incorporating new developments to ensure that they're meeting that criteria. So, so, next slide, please. I think this kind of leads, so some of the biggest changes, talking about the flood insurance rate maps, the biggest change other than some of the limits of, of the floodplain itself is how the floodway is delineated within San Marcos. And, and this is because we have, because we have higher regulations of our floodplains and how you develop within them, these maps look a little bit different than what some are used to. You can see, you kind of see the exhibit there in the top left. It's showing what a typical floodway looks, floodplain looks like. It's broken up into a floodway, which is kind of the center area, which is typically your main conveyance of those flood, flood flows. And then you have two fringe areas and which are on either side of that floodway. Historically, that flood fringe area has been allowed to be filled or developed such that you don't encroach into the floodway. And, and the flood fringe has been analyzed such that the floodway only increases by a foot. We now know over time that allowing that has a cumulative effect and could adversely affect adjoining property owners or, or people downstream. And so our ordinance has, has since twenty seventeen not allowed that floodplain fringe fill without an analysis to be done to ensure there's no impacts by any fill. You're not allowed to fill in that fringe without ensuring that you're doing the, the engineering behind it, the analysis behind it. And so essentially, we're treating all of our floodplain as if it were floodway. It's not your traditional floodway where that's that main conveyance of flows, but it's being treated as sensitively, as sensitive as that floodway area. So that's, that's the basis of how or why we now show our entire floodplain, that bluish area, as floodway. And so again, it's a little bit untraditional in how you typically look at flood maps, but, but that's under the basis of that. Next slide, please. So who is affected by all of this? Homeowners, businesses, new developments? They're affected by how they do things in the future, they're affected by how others do things in the future. And so without these rules and regulations and enforcement of them, you know, new homeowners won't be, won't be protected from flooding, and existing homeowners won't be protected by new developments. And so that, that's the whole underlying basis of our rules and regulations within our flood damage prevention ordinance, as well as our design standards in our stormwater technical manual. Next slide, please. So this is the first reading of that ordinance change, we'll have the second reading in January seventh. January, again, January seventeenth is the actual date that will be on the map, those is, that's the date. The maps will become effective through FEMA, and, and we'll have up-to-date maps for the city. Again, our, our plans are to continue to update studies and models to the most, more, most current Atlas fourteen data. That's, you know, that's something we've already taken, made progress on. We've, we partnered with the Corps to update some of the hydrology and hydraulics that go into the, the flood models. So that's already in progress, we're working towards updating that information, again, ensuring developments use that information, even superseding what's now becoming effective through FEMA. And, and we'll continue to enforce those regulations. That's my presentation, I can answer any questions that you may have.
I have, I have a couple of questions, if no, if no one else does.
You can be first.
All right. Um, so I read a ProPublica story about, you know, flood maps and how it sort of changed people's insurance and the rates that are associated with that. So the twenty eighteen, the Atlas thing, would, would we say twenty eighteen is our most recent data set that we're basing these flood maps off of?
Not these flood maps, but what we're regulating to for new developments. If you're talking about insurance, they're specifically looking at these flood insurance rate maps. Whether, you know, until, until this update, they were looking at the two thousand and five maps. So, so they weren't looking at twenty eighteen information or any of those releases. They look at specifically the flood insurance rate maps that are issued for the area.
Because I saw, and thank you, mayor, for asking the question in the message board, I saw the increase, I think it went from three thousand and something homes to, or, no, this was square, squares.
Acres, acres.
So it increased about seventeen, seventeen point five percent of our city is in the floodplain, correct? So one of the, the issues that people were having in the past regarding flood maps was that their homes were, to their knowledge, erroneously included in these flood maps whereas they weren't before. And some home, homeowners went and because they understood that the rates were going to rise with, with their homes now being in a floodplain, they went and hired surveyors, they went and hired attorneys who later agreed with them that their homes shouldn't have been put in the, in the floodplain. But the maps were never changed to reflect that, the maps still showed. So what, what happens in this instance when we've now increased people who potentially are now included in that floodplain? I saw we have a floodplain administrator that if somebody disagrees or has some sort of dispute, who is our floodplain administrator?
I, I am.
Oof, so if people have disputes, they're going to reach out to you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And, and those, typically they go through an elevation certificate with, through a surveyor to identify that. And if they did that five, ten years ago, those are still valid. So if they can show that their home has been surveyed by licensed surveyor, they can bring that to us, and, and we can give them a letter to, to provide to their lender or their insurance provider to show that either they're above or, or, at what elevation they're at. Because their, their rates for flood insurance might not change because their property may be in the floodplain. Their home may just be elevated to a point where it's not at the same risk as those that may be at ground or, or even lower than the floodplain. And so they're, they're able to utilize that information, they don't have to, you don't have to do that again, but they can provide that, and, and we can give them letters to, to help support that.
And in addition to letters, if somebody did have to acquire cost for the surveyor, found out that all of their findings were, were correct, would we reimburse them for that surveying fee?
No.
Okay, because that was an issue that was brought up the last time these flood maps. ProPublica literally wrote an entire article about it, and property owners were really pissed about it. In addition to that, do we, do we have an idea, like, how much the projections are based off of these new maps? Like, so I was, I was looking into Rice did a study about the risk, I think FEMA released a risk rating two point oh system or something like that, is that these maps that we're talking about?
I think that's a different, that's a different tool that's used, I mean, this is the underlying data within it, but it's a tool within.
Because they estimated that Hayes County, according to that study, was projected to see a hundred and thirty-seven percent premium increase with new maps. Now, we know that the federal government doesn't allow, it caps it at eighteen percent per year if your insurance rates do rise. But, yeah, I was just wondering, do we have an idea on what we should tell homeowners who actually do have flood insurance currently? On how to anticipate any rates rising? Do we have any idea?
So those rates are across the board, so there's no variation if you're in Austin or San Marcos or somewhere else. Those, those rates are established federally. How they, how they bring folks up to current rates varies, and I don't know specifically. There's a few different paths to how they bring current people with flood insurance, how they bring them up to the current rates. There's a process that could span five years or, or some, some level of, of a rate increase over time. So that's, that's not all at one time.
And the reason I ask is this, because there was a lawsuit filed which Texas actually entered into with some other states regarding FEMA maps and regarding the insurance prices that were going to rise. Mr. Aguirre, I don't know the status of this lawsuit because it was, it was filed pretty recently in anticipation of these new maps. So how does that potentially affect this decision, if it is ongoing?
Well, I first, I don't know anything about the lawsuit, but I'd, I'd have to, right now, we have to go with what we know is, you know, the lawsuit hasn't been decided, so there's been no final adjudication that might affect the law. Should we be mindful of it and see whether it has merit, I'd have to look into that. But right now, I think we've got, yeah, we have to go with what our working knowledge of the law is right now, and the requirement to update these FEMA maps. I'd have to do a little more digging on, into that.
Okay.
But clearly, if we found, or if there was a court ruling, we would have to revisit this, if it somehow impacted our ordinances, we would revisit it at that time, if there was a definitive court ruling from a higher court.
Okay, because I know in Houston, people, you know, with all the flooding and all that, people were literally who previously had flood insurance, it was becoming so costly that they just forego having, forego having insurance altogether, leaving their homes and obviously their property at risk, and we don't want to exacerbate a housing crisis. It's already looking the way it does because insurance rates are rising. And so I just wanted a clear idea of how this was really going to affect rates so that in anticipation, when people come, and they will, to complain about those increases of rates, we have a clear understanding of what we're voting on and how it actually impacted that.
I can speak to that because of a homeowner. I have two properties that I have two separate insurance companies on. I got notification about nine months ago from both properties saying, hey, this is what the increase is going to be, and they didn't do an automatic change, and these are national companies, they just came and said, hey, because of Atlas fourteen, federal guidelines said this is in this, we, we're working with whatever the detail of the letter said, we're working with this is in this. They're giving me seven years on the major corporate, the major company, and I'm getting ten years on the local state company for them to increase it to the standard that it would be for, for that. And it's not because of an income or thing, it was just that's my policy that I had in there. So I can only speak to two companies, I can't speak to other ones, maybe smaller ones, but that's.
What was this about the seven and ten years?
Oh, so one company was offering me a ten-year adjustment, and the other one's a seven-year adjustment to meet up to what that cost is going to be at the end of that.
Basically, they're giving you several years before you get to the top, instead of just.
Yes, ma'am.
And requiring it right away.
And it wasn't, it was kind of a standard across statewide, I can't say it was national, but it was statewide because of Atlas fourteen, and it specifically said Atlas fourteen.
And that was earlier this year?
About eight months ago, yes, ma'am.
But even though that was.
I can speak to some of those.
In twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
My personal experience, right, I've been through two floods, I've got homeowners insurance, flood insurance right now. So, yeah, I will, I'm going to be a little emotional about this, but I'm going to go back to just a couple of things, and then Ms. Rodriguez was doing a pretty good job kind of leading down a path on a few things here. I want to get a few things that were in, the, the mayor asked a really good couple of questions in the, on the online or on the question, message board that I'd love for the public to hear, and I'd love for them to be in the packet next time also. First off, how many acres are we adding to the flood maps total citywide? Do we know that? It's on the message board, and I could read it, but I want to make sure that this is available to the public. It's going to find this not just in the message board. And so I want this added to the packet for next time, but I want you to read these out loud for me if you could so that the public is aware of what we're, what we're talking about here.
So the city limits covers approximately twenty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-four acres. The current floodplain prior to this update across the city is three thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine acres. With the new maps, that number has now increased to four thousand five hundred and fifty acres.
So approximately eight hundred additional acres added to the floodplain as a total for the city.
And I will caveat that, that city limits changes and some of the.
But that's as, as of today, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, do we have any idea how many addresses that impacts in both commercial or residential?
We, we do not have that.
Okay, I'd love for you guys to aggregate that data for us, so that when we start to have constituents ask about how many homes are being affected by this. Next thing is have all the addresses that are going to be impacted by this been notified by FEMA or the city that as of January seventeen, they may be required to have homeowners insurance or that their rate may be going up. You, you got one from your company, but has the city done anything on that or asked questions of FEMA, if everybody's been notified on that?
The, the city has not done that type of notification.
So on our.
So wait, you said notification, you said have we asked FEMA if they did the notification?
Yeah, I'm just.
Two different questions.
They, they are, and, and I'm just basically asking, is, is everyone been notified as of January seventeenth?
By FEMA.
Either FEMA or insurance companies or us, like, is it something that you have even discussed with FEMA that is a requirement of an entity to inform, not just they get a letter from their insurance company or whatever that, that, that it's going to happen that day, that it, that it could be coming?
Yeah, well, let's let him answer.
I have not asked FEMA, I don't believe they, they contact directly, I think it's through the, the insurance provider or the mortgage company that, that contacts property owners directly.
I get a letter from FEMA every three, four years asking me if I want flood insurance, is that?
A standard operating procedure for zip codes, I found that out.
I just figured it's because I've got some low-lying property.
No, they, they, you probably do, but they, they do send it out to high-risk areas, they notify everybody in certain zip codes that you may be interested in it. I, I found that out, that that's one way FEMA does some outreach, is they'll look at a zip code.
So I'm not special.
That, that they will do some outreach. So basically, you know, what we're really talking about here is entering in, the, the insurance program is run by the federal, is run by the insurance program. There are some private flood insurance, very, very few, and there's nobody that'll operate within the state of Texas. Really talking about here is, is entering in to the flood insurance program with the, with the city and the, the state, or with the federal government. What are the benefits for us entering in to this program? And a couple of them are on here, but then I've got a couple of caveats possibly too, but I'd like the public to hear that.
The benefits of our participation in National Flood Insurance Program, it makes that flood assurance available to homeowners without the city's. Without the city's participation, um, property owners could not obtain flood insurance.
That's not true, you absolutely can.
Through.
Absolutely can, and I figured that was gonna come up.
Through.
You absolutely can get, go get flood insurance program. It's only fifteen percent more expensive on average. Um, the flood, now, they do not have to issue it to you. If you are in the program, they're pretty much guaranteed it. That's the caveat to it. You can apply for it, but FEMA doesn't have to give it to you, which is, um, one of the caveats. That's why I wanted to clarify to people is, we're not required to be in this program. Um, but it does pretty much guarantee you flood insurance, but it doesn't guarantee, um, are there any risks to us being in this program?
Can, can we back up? You're, you're both saying something about you're, you're guaranteed to have the insurance. It's access to the insurance. They're not paying it for you.
Yes, yes.
That's a big difference.
Yes, and you may have to slow me down a little bit, Mayor, I got a lot of stuff written down here.
No, you go ahead. I'm just trying to clarify.
You're doing a good job.
And for me and for the public.
You're, you're doing good. Are there any risks for us being entered into this, um, program?
No, shouldn't be any risks.
Um, I'll kinda touch on that, but I'm gonna leave that one alone for just a second. I also would like for you to describe to the public what, um, the differences between, um, homes that are in the floodplain and are not with this change, but also existing and future structures. What would the differences? And that's answers in the message board, but I just wanted to give it out. Um, what differences, um, here, in fact, Mayor had the question of, um, what are the numbers of thoughts that affect properties regarding future development?
So future development will be required to, you know, adhere to these changes. Any additions to existing properties have to adhere to the changes. Existing properties do not. So if you're an existing home, this, these changes do not affect, um, what, you know, what is existing. You're not gonna be required to change your existing home based on these changes. It's only if you're doing any additions or, or it's a new development that has to adhere to this. Um, there are, there is a case of a, a substantial improvement, um, to, to a property. Um, so if you're, if you're increasing the value of the structure of the home, that's considered a substantial improvement and that would require, uh, compliance with, with this ordinance. Um, if it's a substantial improvement to, to the property, again, that's, that's primarily fixed improvement, not, um, you know, not adding new appliances or, or, or things like that. Um, I, I will mention, um, there is also, as part of the participation in the flood insurance program, the city, uh, is provided fifteen percent discount on the flood insurance, uh, through that program.
Yeah, the, and the city is or the citizens are?
The citizens, through the city's participations.
Yes, okay. That, that, that is the benefit. That's really the only benefit that I can find is the additional savings to the, to the taxpayer or to the insurer um, uh, is that savings in, in the flood insurance program, if they continue to keep it, but I'll get to that in a moment. Um, the other thing too is then, um, could you explain the difference to citizens, the difference of being required to have insurance and not if you have a mortgage or if you own the property outright? Is there, will you be required to have insurance or not if you own it outright?
My understanding is if, if you own it outright, there's no requirement for flood insurance.
Okay.
It's encouraged, but it, it's no requirement.
It is, so, um, all right, you, you did very well. And I'm gonna have, one thing I am gonna say, there is a slight risk to this. Um, in that, in North Carolina, what they're dealing with right now is, um, if you get flooded out and you have more than fifty percent damage, which doesn't take much to do, um, if you include things, um, the FEMA is requiring to, if you continue your insurance, to, um, to adhere to all the new codes, which would require someone to go above and modify their structure. And that is a risk. And it's something that FEMA in the past, or I think the city has kind of overlooked or whatever, but FEMA is now enforcing that. And there are many stories coming out of North Carolina of people who are in temporary structures that don't necessarily meet our code. So I take a tiny home to my lot after I get flooded out and I put it on my lot. FEMA will tell me, number one, the city will tell me, FEMA will say, the city needs to make me remove it or I can't keep my flood insurance. So there are some kinda downturn risk to being involved in this that are nuances, that are coming out of stories, both of Florida and things I've heard here personally, that people just don't talk about, and then also out of North Carolina. So I'm still gonna be in support of this, but I want people to be aware of, there are risks in being involved in this because the federal government can come in and dictate to you, you have to follow your own policies. It will give this body no leeway in enforcement when it comes to a natural disaster, when, if it ever, and when it does happen. Again, no one will be able to go back to that. The flood insurance program is broken, flat out, and, um, something needs to be done about it. And we're not gonna fix it here tonight. It's extremely expensive. Most of my neighbors are opting out. Ten percent of all Louisianans have dropped their flood insurance in the last eighteen to twenty-four months. That's a fact. And because of that, the rates are going up even more. I know lots of my neighbors that own their homes that are absolutely cannot afford homeowners insurance and flood insurance. That is a liability to this community and this body in the future when a natural disaster happens again. We talk about affordable housing, if we can't keep people in those homes, um, flat out, it's gonna be a problem in the future. And a lot of people are gambling at this point. If my flood insurance, which has gone up to over three thousand dollars a year, if I don't have a flood for 20 years, that's sixty thousand dollars. I say, well, if I have a flood and don't, don't have a flood for 20 years, it's kinda paid for my flood insurance, right? And this is going on nationwide and it's going on in my neighborhood. And it's gonna go up even more to the eight hundred acres of people who just got added to this program and have no idea they're about to get slammed. But the thing is, if you're an investor, if you own your home outright, you're not required to have it, which wish everybody would. But it also, when disaster happens, the people that own their home, that can't get cover, didn't have coverage, that can't afford to repair it, sell out to investors because those guys can buy it for cash and they don't have to have insurance, which drives out more of my neighbors, which is exactly what happened in the past. And we reduce homeownership and, 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 and bring in more investors. I kinda stressed enough, one thing that this, that we need to do as a region, as a state and as a country is fix these flooding problems. The FEMA spent fifteen billion dollars, in the Corps spent fifteen billion dollars to re-improve the levees in New Orleans they held. It's time to fix the Blanco River, guys. It's the longest free-flowing river in the state of Texas with no flood control. I'm tired of having these discussions about it. People lose their lives, we have damage all over the place. And these fixes that we have here could have ramifications to people in the, in the future. If a natural disaster ever happens, we lose a few thousand homes, this body and this government's gonna have no control over what leeway they give people on those properties. That is a concern to me in a time of disaster. So, um, I, I wish that I had all the answers here, other than the federal government needs to step up. And we need to do, but I want everybody to keep in mind, when we talk about affordable housing, the impacts of these insurance and the cost this has on keeping people in their homes. And, um, you know, I, um, I appreciate the presentation. One other thing I want you to please add is the interactive map to the presentation, please. I had to go to the message board to find it. And I want all these, these data points added to the presentation next time so people can find it, please. And, um, you know, look, this is not funny and this is gonna happen here again. And when I, my neighbors tell me, I can't afford insurance, I can't afford flood insurance and they're gonna risk it. Man, that's, that's scary to me. I'm gonna keep mine, I can afford it, but a lot of them can't. But it is an extremely added burden to me. And the amount of people we're about to add to that burden is gonna be extensive and a lot of them aren't gonna add it. And as these rates go up, they're gonna continue to drop off. So, um, people keep pushing to fix the Blanco River. We did it with purgatory, we've done it with other things. It's time for the federal government and the state to step up and do something about it. The last thing I'll leave with is, I wanna thank, as of today, they fixed my fence, my alley today. It's almost ironic that the channel and the concrete are done. They fixed my fence today, they didn't have any idea the irony of it. Um, but that was the last of the flood improvements in my neighborhood, literally. And I, I'm extremely happy about it, but it's a temporary fix, you know? We couldn't spend that money outside the city. We couldn't combine it with any federal funding to do any big projects. But thanks to the councils that went and got that money, thanks for staff that went and got that money and did those projects. That levy and that drainage and the improvements in the neighborhood have been a real pain in my butt and to my neighbors. But it's nice to have some things that were done. And, um, so, um, please keep in mind, when we go to DC, when you discuss things with the Water Development Board, with your congressman, your state rep, the governor, I don't care, that they have got to fix the Blanco River, period. Um, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Okay, let me ask, uh, staff, the items that Mr. Gleason was asking being in the presentation for next time, are those easy things to, to get in, not gonna take three months to do or whatever?
No, we could, we'll get, we'll get that done.
Okay, then I, I would like to ask, uh, for a little bit more information, if you have it. I'm, I'm assuming with our GIs that we do, of the, um, the number of acres at eight hundred or so that's in, that will be in the new floodplain? That if you can let me know about how much of that is vacant? How much of that is currently residential? How much is commercial? And I know that some of our zoning is CD five and CD four allow for both, so you can just put both of those into a category. Is that ease, fairly easily? I don't need precise numbers.
No, we, we can have that for you.
Part of my concern is how much of this, and, and I appreciate Mr. Gleason looking at, at what's built. I'm also looking at what's not built and how that's going to affect us and our economic development, uh, prospects in the future. So that's what I was looking there. Um, and I didn't answer my, ask my questions as well as I could have. Uh, what I was really looking at is what is the impact? And our community can be a general statement that if, uh, because I was asking about what, what, what is it you can't build now? You said, yeah, but you can build, but there's an increased cost often, correct? You're having to raise things up, et cetera, if you're in the floodplain. So that's really more of what I was looking at is, is there an increased cost if you're trying to build in the floodplain?
Yes, I mean, uh, associated with those floodway changes that I mentioned before, we increased our, you know, we went to, adopted a, quite a few higher standards in 2017, after 2015 floods.
Right.
We increased the elevation requirements, you have to be above, above the base flood, flood elevation. And there's a number of other ones, um, any of those.
Well, my point is if you're not in the floodplain, you don't have to do the, the two foot free board. If you are, you do, that increases the cost. So just a general, um, consensus that if you're, weren't in the flood, floodplain before and you are now, it's going to increase the cost of development or building things, is that correct? Generally speaking?
Yes, and, and all of those standards are, are higher levels of protection to future flooding, so.
I didn't say it wasn't worth it, I just said it, it, it increases the, the cost.
Yes.
And Mayor, we're, they, they do additional costs. If you got a slab, you got additional concrete and if you're pier and beam, it's additional height than plumbing. Um, it, it is, it's somewhat negligible in the total overall cost to, to do it. Um, the one thing that I was gonna kinda hit on here that just.
Hold on, I, I will disagree with that, cause when I was on council in the nineties, we tried to get that, that free board up to a foot after the ninety-eight flood.
Now, raising a home is what I'm gonna touch on.
No, 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 I'm talking about building new.
Okay.
Building new, we tried to get the one foot and we heard screams and hollers from all the builders talking about how much that would increase the cost of a home and now it's two foot. So it, it is an increase.
It, it is an increase, it is an increase. But one thing I didn't touch on that I kinda wanted to did too about kinda the national discussion and local discussion about how to fix some of the flooding problems is, um, raising a home, um, in certain positions, it's been flooded numerous, numerous times, one of these offs kinda down on river bottoms, it does make sense to do. For the most part, it's way too expensive for most people. Um, I've had a lot of homes in my neighborhood that were knocked down and raised, although they were perfectly good homes, a lot of them, yet still. But some, one of my neighbors tried to raise their home on their own privately and it was a total disaster. It fell off, they were in another home for almost ten years while waiting to, in litigation to solve that. And at the time, it was over a hundred dollars a square foot on average to raise a home. I bet it's a hundred and fifty dollars now, it's not feasible. So when the community talked, well, just raise all these homes, guys, we're talking hundreds of millions, if not billions of dollars to do that. It's not feasible. That money could be put towards the Blanco River itself. So I always hear, well, let's just raise all the homes. I don't think people have ever been through that, seen their neighbors try to go through it and how much that physically actually costs, how risky it is and how a lot of times it doesn't work out very well. And notion of knocking down my whole neighborhood or any of these others to, to, to just turn it into green space is never gonna happen. So, um, it's another one where it's the argument I always hear of not fixing the Blanco, we'll just spend the money raising homes. When you put pen to paper, that's just, let's just fix the Blanco and then we fix everybody's problem as a regional effort. So, uh, raising homes only works if the home is totally utterly destroyed where there's nothing left and it's in an area that probably is gonna have it happen more than once in twenty years. Um, and even then, there, we don't have enough money, the federal government doesn't, to do that in our town. And if they did, we could just fix the Blanco and not have to worry about it and keep people in their homes.
Well, and there's a, a lot of neighborhoods that, I mean, we're, we, we've got, we've got land that's, that's floodable, if you will, be, because there's, there's your neighborhood and there's what happened in 2015. But, you know, sometimes it's a San Marcos flood, San Marcos River flood, and sometimes it's a Blanco River flood. When it's a San Marcos River flood and we've got Purgatory Creek, it's the Dunbar area and Faris Street and all of that that's got.
And look, talk to, talk to the old timers, you stand out on the courthouse square and be surrounded by water in three directions.
Yep.
Right, I'm just straight up the truth, they'll tell you, right?
Yep, okay, are you done?
And then, um, yeah, just thanks for letting me rant a little bit. And, uh, I'm still gonna vote for this, but I do want everyone to be aware of that there could be, if we ever have a really major, major problem, and I'm talking even worse than 2015, um, there could be some real ramifications about what the city is gonna be able to give leeway to homeowners. And the federal government's gonna come in and tell you what you can and cannot do. And the impacts of that could be pretty negative on people's lives, so that's my only negative I can find. Mayor, I.
Wait, Ms. Rodriguez is next and then I'll come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, um, so let's say hypothetically, uh, we, we approve this, you know, uh, hopefully the city sends something out. I hope we don't just leave it to FEMA to send something out to let people know. Um, but do we, could we include the fact that if you do not have a mortgage, like Mr. Gleason was talking about, um, you are not required to obtain or maintain flood insurance? And what a lot of people don't know is you can still, let's say an emergency happens, you can still apply for FEMA. However, you can only do that once if you don't have insurance. And so I really wanna let people know that if you do forego to have insurance because either you can't afford it or whatever, um, I would really like to let people know that, hey, this is only, you can only use this once. And I don't know if a lot of people know that, um, after that, your chance is gone.
And, and that's a, and that's a good segue to one more thing. And I'm gonna go home and think about five more things. But even if you're not on the floodplain.
Mr. Gleason, if I could stop you real quick, um, just so I can finish what I, what I asked.
You're okay, you're doing good, you're doing fine.
So if we could have, you know, when we actually send these, these things out, if we could have some, some of people's, the ramification, ramifications of not having insurance and what that could mean for people. I just want people to be able to make a well-informed decision because it is a very, it is very much a trend for people to forego insurance. We see it a lot on the coastal cities, we see it a lot in Houston. Um, and so, yeah, just as much information as possible on that, uh, would be nice.
And I'll segue into that about, even if you're not on the floodplain, please go get in flood insurance. It costs very, very little if you're out of the floodplain and, um.
Oh, yeah, nowadays, people, there, there's a lot of surprises.
Yeah, it, well, and it's because, you know, so much of what's going on is, you know, my neighborhood was not, when it was built, was not in the floodplain. A lot of the community wasn't, right? And they, over time, you have development upstream, you have things change, you have a disaster happen that hadn't happened for fifty years. People don't remember about it. But we need to encourage everyone, go get flood insurance if you're not in it. And even if you are, please stay in it. Cause part of the reason this, the program is failing is because they're paying out some of this stuff and FEMA is too, to people that would've, should've paid in. And including, the whole city of New Orleans basically had an exemption during Katrina and the program has never been right since. Um, and, and so I encourage everybody across the city, even if you think you're not gonna flood, it could happen. And flood insurance, for if you're not in the floodplain, very minimal, a couple hundred bucks a year. And, uh, please, everybody keep it and I hope that, uh, we never, ever have to make any claims ever again, but we know it'll happen. So, thanks for bringing that in, Ms. Rodriguez, about another one.
Okay, anybody else, did you have something?
Yeah, just real quick, like, uh, going back to what councilman, council member Rodriguez was saying, on the homes that you're only allowed to get that, uh, FEMA help one time, what happens when it becomes a different owner? They sold that house, it's a different owner now, do they qualify for, and, for FEMA?
I don't know, uh, it's the.
You, you do, you do.
It's the.
It's a change of ownership, it's, you sign an agreement as the owner, that you can get FEMA one time?
I'd have to look, it's the ninety, nineteen eighty-eight disaster law or something like that that has those, those stipulations.
Sorry, my insurance, um, says I have to inform somebody if it's the floodplain and then it does, it will transfer them.
And I used to live there in Blanco Gardens as well and my mother as well, and I have two homes there now. Uh, anytime I think you do a repair or gonna add an addition, you are requiring to do a s, engineered survey on the height? Even the driveways, that, cause that's an additional cost to get an engineer to do that, is that, uh?
Are you, are you asking if we require it or?
Yeah, I'm asking, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Uh, driveways aren't typically as impacted, it, it depends. I mean, if you are planning to bring in fill to construct a driveway, then there could be some concerns on how that affects. If you're doing it at grade, then we typically can work with you, um, so.
Right.
I, I would say to come in and talk to us and.
Okay.
Work through that process. So I would say to come in and talk to us and work through that process.
When I was saying what floods at that neighborhood, and it's been like this forever, my mother always told me this, it's not the San Marcos River that floods me, it's gonna be Blanco. And she was right, she was prophetic, I guess. We used to live in Grove Street, and we went through floods here, and that's when we moved to Blanco Gardens because the floods weren't there. That's another thing I wanna make sure that people know, it's not the San Marcos River. To my knowledge, it's a Blanco River. And someone stated earlier that Purgatory Creek is what floods the other part of town, Dunbar and places like that. Just wanted to add to the conversation, but thank you.
Well, I gotta point out, Real Vista does get hit pretty hard there whenever, whenever we do have a lot of flood. If it's flooding Purgatory Creek, I can promise you it's getting up to the 900 block of Phil Street. It's just one of those, oh, yeah, it gets, it's pretty nasty, even with the improvements we have done, it still gets kinda-
I got two, two more quick comments, because my colleagues keep bringing things to light.
Quickly.
With the FEMA, there's no guarantee you're gonna get FEMA help. My neighbor's got 1,500, they're doing 750 now for the people in North Carolina because FEMA's broke too. No guarantee FEMA's gonna have enough money. Don't count on it whatsoever. There's no guarantee that's coming. The other thing is on flood insurance, it's not monolithic. Go home and check your policies. Even if you've got one that's 10 years old, go back and revise it. Because you can, it can go up to a certain amount in contents and up to a certain amount on your structure, and that will vary depending on your policy itself too. So even if people are like, I totally can't afford it, I'm like, let's look at it, and maybe you can reduce some of the, you hate to do that, but at least maybe you can reduce the cost of your policy also. So the policies, even though they're run by the federal government and the FEMA insurance program, they're not static, and it's done through your insurance agent. I fortunately had a very good agent who was on top of mine and had revised mine just a couple of years before, and I went from 10,000 in content coverage to like 25. And had I not done that, I would have been in a whole lot worse shape than I even was and still not made whole. And then one other thing for everybody to be aware of, flood insurance is the only one that now, if you, if you've got it changed up, does allow you to pay for some housing, but it's very little. It's not like your, you know, your normal insurance. So it's still not the same, it never will be. But it's a couple more bullet points for everybody with flood insurance. And I'm done, Mayor.
I think that's it. Mr. Vingega, we will vote.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Mayor Hugheson?
Aye.
The motion passes six to zero with one absent.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the presentation and for answering all of our questions. We appreciate it. Okay, folks, we normally take a break every 90 minutes. It has now been almost 120. Please be back in your seat at eight o'clock, by that clock, and we'll ready to go. Thank you. We have returned from our break, and we are on to item 15.
Receive a stat presentation, hold, and consider approval of resolution 2024-252R allocating to nonprofit agencies human services grant funding of $550,000 from the city's general fund authorized city manager designated to act as official representative of the city in matters related to said grant funds, including authorization to execute funding contracts with selected agencies on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Second. A motion for Mr. Scott to approve with a second from Mr. Mendoza, presentation.
Okay, I'm Carol Griffith. I'm the Housing and Community Development Manager, and this evening I'll do a brief presentation on the applications, the board evaluations, and recommendations. And then we're asking City Council to make a decision on the allocation of $550,000 in human services grant funding. The Human Services Advisory Board has evaluated all applications and has made the recommendations that will be presented. The Human Services Advisory Board is appointed by the City Council to make a recommendation on funding allocations for the annual human services grant application process. Each board member reviews every application for funding in detail and scores it according to the criteria that's published as part of the application. The board meets weekly from late August to mid-November and reviews five to six applications every week. Also each week, those applicant agencies provide a presentation on the programs for which they are requesting funding, followed by a question and answer period with the board. All scoring and discussion by board members includes an in-depth review of each application and objective consideration of what will be the best use of funding for San Marcos. This year, the board reviewed 37 applications. Board Chair is Yancey Aravalo. Board members are Linda Harper-Williams, Lucy Johnson, Sharif Gussies, Clayton Carlisle, and non-voting social work member Pam Lambert. Joanne Parsons also participated as a board member through October. Staff would like to thank these board members for their dedication to this process. This board does a lot of work. Next slide. Applicants must meet the definition of human services agency that's in the board's rules and regulations document, and this is it up on the screen. This year, the 37 applications were received from 28 agencies. Next slide. And then, next slide, thank you. In an effort to make the process as open and transparent as possible, all information provided to the board is uploaded to the HSAB webpage. This slide shows a screenshot of just part of the page. It contains meeting links, board packets, program applications, and summaries like a funding history for the past few years. Agendas and meeting recordings are provided on the city's Agenda Center page, just like the city council meeting information. Next slide. At the board orientation in August, and again, before the discussion meetings in November, staff reviewed with the board some key principles of funding based on city council guidance and other feedback received in the past. These include selecting the programs that will have the most impact on the highest priority needs of this community, trying to identify highest priority needs for San Marcos using the information provided in the application, reviewing for most impact for the dollar, which could include serving a few people in depth for lasting change, or serving many people for a specific need, realizing it does not make sense to fund all applicants for several reasons, including having to split the funding among more and more agencies into small pieces that will have less of an impact, treating all applicants equally for consideration of this funding. What I tell the board is it would take an extensive review of agency financials to determine which agencies, quote, "need" the funding more than others. And actually, all agencies have to continually seek funding, so they all need this funding. And then also, of course, using a scoring system to assist in making the decision. Next slide. Board members also assess the risk that outcomes of the funding might not happen as envisioned. The risk assessment criteria for each agency included the categories shown on this slide. 30 points or higher equals high risk, 15 to 29 moderate, and 0 to 14 low risk. So you can see that we look at program complexity, experience working the program, et cetera. Next slide. After averaging the risk scores, no program was considered by the board to be high risk. So what you see on the screen are the agencies and programs that were considered moderate risk, and they're listed from highest to lowest. Next slide.
Ms. Griffith, could you go back two slides to the points and talk a little bit more about what each of those means and whether a one is good or the higher is good?
Mm-hmm. So slide number six, yeah, you're there. Okay, program complexity. So if a program is more complex, it has more moving parts, maybe it has more staff, it has to deal with more regulations, maybe it has multiple funding sources, that kind of thing, there could be, there is a higher risk that perhaps they wouldn't be able to achieve their goals if they're not organized or whatever. And so that's considered a higher risk, so they get higher points. So the confusing thing, I think, is that on the evaluation, a higher score is good, right? When they're scoring the applications. On risk, a higher score is bad, because it means you have higher risk. So that's what we're trying to do here. So you get 15 points, for example, if you have a very complex program. But if you have something simple, let's say, providing shoes, pretty cut and dried, you get low points on program complexity. And that's a good thing, because lower means lower risk. Program experience, the board looks at how long has this program been in place? Are the staff familiar with it? You know, like the staff who run the program, are they familiar with it? Are they qualified? That sort of thing. Other funding support-
Hold on.
I'm sorry?
So for experience, if you are experienced, is that a one or a 10?
So lower points, so one or zero. You can get zero too.
So we're playing golf?
I don't know how to play golf.
The lower the number, the better.
The, the lower the number, the better, yes.
All right.
Yes. So, okay. Other funding support. So is the program dependent on the city for most of its support? Or does it have a conglomeration of other support that we know is coming in? And we ask them that in their application to, so that they're not, like, if one funding source doesn't happen, is the program still gonna continue? Is basically what you're looking at there. City funding experience, that's if we have funded the agency or the program before, which we have in many of the cases, has the experience gone well? And I can tell you that it has, like, that's, it's only five points, because we really do have super good agencies and programs. So the board looks to the staff to tell them how it's been, and we're like, you know, they're running the program, they're turning in their receipts, we've got no complaints. Same thing for performance history. Sorry, I kind of mixed those two. But performance history is also, not only are they, like, city funding experience is, are they interacting with the city well? Are they getting their receipts in on time? Are they spending the money? Performance history is, are they getting the program done? Did they actually serve people? Did they serve as many as they said they were gonna serve? So does that answer the question?
That's great, thank you.
Okay. Let's go to slide eight. So now we switch over to the application evaluation criteria. So this is the scoring of the actual application, and higher points are good. So as applications are received, staff checked them for completeness and eligibility, and then we provided all information to the board. All applications were also posted on the city's HSAB webpage. We try to just keep the public informed. Each board member evaluated and scored each application on these criteria. So they looked at community need and justification of that need, implementation, is the program ready to go? Is it definitely gonna happen this year? Impact and cost effectiveness, how much is their overhead, that sort of thing. Community support, the board really likes to see, like, are their board members attending meetings? And do they have a lot of volunteers that help and their reference letters? And then the council priorities are specifically, have they been in San Marcos for two years? They get points for that. Do they have a local location? They get points for that. And will the funding actually increase the service? And there's additional points for that. So that's how that works. Next slide. Now we'll go over the board's evaluation process just briefly. This slide is just a quick look at how the scoring comes through in Excel. So there's a score for each of the five criteria that were on the last slide, and that adds up to a total for each program. This scoring was provided by each board member for every program, except our non-voting member started very late in the process, so she did what she could. But she's also advisory only, so just, just know that that, that didn't affect things as much. Let's see, then, the scoring was, okay, the board members' total scores for each program were averaged. And I can tell you that I look at comparing the board members to see, are they using their ranges of scoring similarly? And this year, I felt like they were. They did use the 100 points like we expected, and so that we averaged the scores. Next slide. So in the end, the review sheet used by the board looks like this, and I know you can't read it, but I just wanted to show it to you to show the overview that the board was working with while they were discussing funding. So pink is a low score, yellow is a medium score, and green is a high score. So how did the board make their decision this year? The board discussed each application individually. They considered the scores as shown here, the amount of funding requested, and the impact of each program on the need for services in San Marcos. They held a thorough discussion of the merits of each. All board members actively participated in the discussion. And in the next several slides, I'll go over the recommended funding allocations. Next slide. So this year, I'll go over the list briefly, six programs at a time, from highest to lowest score. The board fully funded the top three scorers, which were Hayes County Food Bank, School Fuel, and Meals on Wheels. After some discussion, board consensus was to fund the next three, but not at their requested amount. So what you're seeing on this, these slides is the amount they requested, the funding that's recommended by the board, and then the average score as well. Okay, next slide. The next six also received high average scores. And so you can look at the funding listed here. Regarding the applications from Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, the board stated that providing 20% of the available funding to one agency seemed like too much. And after some discussion on the total amount for the agency, the board is recommending the amounts shown here, which are reduced amounts for each application. So you can see 30,000, 15,000, and 15,000 for the three applications from that agency. And I'll try to give a little background as we go through this, so that's what I'm trying to do here. The application by CASA also generated discussion, but in the end, the board unanimously voted to fund the program almost at the requested amount. For Greater San Marcos Youth Council, the board noted that 31,000 would provide for about half the salaries they requested and all of the utilities. So that's kind of the reasoning they used. The board noted the longevity with each of these three agencies which, with which they have served San Marcos related to the issue of domestic abuse. That was also important to the discussion. Bobcat Pride's Emergency Assistance Program is also recommended for full funding of $5,000. Next slide. So the next six received moderate average scores. These programs are all recommended to receive some, but not full funding. Of note, the board combined the two applications from Nosotros Slhente for Shoes and Coats into one to fund the agency a total of $10,000 to be used on either shoes or coats, depending on what they see as the need, instead of the $15,000 total requested. Also, the board complimented Southside on the case management aspect of their service, considering that to be an important element to lift people out of their current situations. So that was just of note when they were talking about these applications. Next slide. The rest of the agencies that received moderate scores are shown here. After some discussion, the board voted not to fund Salvation Army's Emergency Assistance Program or Sinekor's Substance Abuse Prevention Program. In particular, board members noted that tracking results from prevention programs is difficult, and they preferred programs that can measure their results. Shibe Opportunity Center submitted applications for three different buildings, but the applications were all for facility or parking lot repairs. The board combined the three applications so they can be in one contract. That would have totaled $75,000 total, and they, the board is recommending one contract of 15,000 that can be used for Shibe's top priority among the buildings that were in their applications. And then it was also noted by the board that while Communities in Schools is a well-regarded agency, this board just had other priorities for funding, and they decided not to fund. Next slide.
I'm sorry, could you address Salvation Army again? I missed something.
So the, I didn't talk much about it. I can give you more information on Salvation Army. So the board discussed funding Salvation Army's request at $10,000 for emergency assistance. And in the end, the board discussion was along the lines of wanting to fund more case management for unhoused individuals instead, and to support a locally grown organization. And so what you'll see, if you watch the meeting, is that they actually changed the 10,000 over to Home Center.
I did watch that part of the meeting.
Yeah. So that's what happened there.
Okay.
Okay, so let's go to slide 15. Yep. Okay, now for the programs that received lower scores. The board noted that they would like to see one to two years of program success before funding the new rapid rehousing program proposed by Southside. They also believe that other services are more important at this time. They are always having to balance things when they're talking. The board voted to fund Sinekor's Youth Recovery Program at half the requested amount as that program does show measurable results. The Outsiders Anonymous Program generated lots of discussion and was complimented by board members as thinking outside the box. However, in the end, other priorities were considered more important. And then while Any Baby Can's Early Childhood Intervention Program did not score extremely high using the San Marcos scoring matrix, the board noted that this- the board noted that this program provides resources for parents with children who have serious developmental needs to help prevent issues for the children and families in the future. And they recommend fully funding that request. Next slide. Now the programs shown here received the lowest scores. For most of these, the board found other priorities to be more compelling. The board decided they would like to support the Piece by Piece Program in particular because of their work on issues such as the fentanyl crisis and mentoring youth. For San Marcos Youth Services Bureau, because of its longstanding service to San Marcos and its long history of being funded by the board, the board recommends funding 10,000 as a contribution towards rent or facility costs. Next slide. So I know it's a lot of applications to consider, so I put them into categories. Overall, the Human Services Advisory Board stated that it tried to focus on basic needs, domestic violence, and programs with measurable results. That's what came through in the discussion when I was listening to it. The program requests were quite varied. The board tried to identify the programs that address the most compelling priorities for the residents of San Marcos specifically. So I've divided the programs into categories just to provide the summary shown here. The board recommends, again, funding 28 of the, 28 programs of the 37 applications received. And it's now up to the city council to make the final decision on allocations. And the complete list of programs will be available on the screen as needed in Excel for any discussion if needed. And I'm happy to answer any questions. This concludes my presentation.
Counsel.
I have something I have to actually request.
Okay, then you may go first.
I'm going to request my colleagues to please consider, and I'm going to ask Lisa from Salvation Army to come in after I make my request, please. I'm going to request that my counsel considers removing $10,000 from the access network and giving it to Salvation Army for, it's going to be for their emergency. Actually, Lisa from Salvation Army, would you please come in here, please? And I'd like for you to explain what emergency assistance is and how it's affected. But I also want to point out that just because Salvation Army is an international organization, when you donate to Salvation Army at their site or whatever it is, it goes directly to the larger organization. But if you donate directly to the San Marcos organization, which most people don't know about, then it gets used in San Marcos. So we're talking about helping people with emergency assistance. I think it's only fair to hear Salvation Army give us one more shot at it, and that's my request.
You asked Ms., you asked Ms. Cruz to come in and speak, so.
Please. Lisa, would you please inform us how beneficial the assistance is? And just, I mean, kind of, you know, five-year case.
We have people come to our office every day needing all types of assistance. So we've lumped all of our assistance into emergency programs. And that's with people who are being disconnected with utilities, people who need food, people who need clothing, people who just got out of jail. They have no other lifeline. They have nobody else out there. And so they come to our door and we help them with IDs, birth certificates, children who do not have birth certificates to get into school. Salvation Army is very important to this community. And I just, I I think that we need the funding to keep our doors open. We have an office here, a lot of the funding that we make for Kettle, you know, it helps, it helps keep our doors open. The less money that we receive, the less people that we can help. And we don't want to turn people away when they come to our door. We want to be able to help them. We want to be able to make a difference in their life and to help them get out of the situation that they're in, no matter what it is. And even when we don't offer services, we refer them to other organizations to try to get them from being on that ground. This cascade effect of one thing goes out of control in their life, and then all of a sudden they're homeless. What can we do to help? That's what the emergency assistance is. The amount that we had requested was going to include rental assistance and to also help open our three-day lodging as well because there are other cities that do offer rental assistance. We track our clients, every single client that comes in. There is an application, we go through a budget with them. A lot of the clients that we see have no budget, they have no money. They are struggling to feed themselves, to stay in an apartment, they're homeless. Those are the type of people that we see, just got out of the hospital. Salvation Army is here for San Marcos and Hayes County. And the majority of the people that we see are from San Marcos.
Thank you, Mrs. Cruz. The utility assistance, how often do you get requests for that? Monthly? Is it pretty often?
Yes, we, we see about, I would say, at least four to five families a day that we're able to assist. And so 120 a month is how many people we're helping.
And you're finishing paying the rest of their electricity bill? How does that utility assistance work?
So if somebody comes into our office, right now we have made, put the brakes on things because we were not able, we're at the end of our fiscal year. So we're only accepting disconnects right now, which is unfortunate for somebody who knows that they can't pay their bill next month because of a situation. We pay, the bill has to be lower than $250, but some people are disconnected. So we'll call the utility company up, find out exactly what it is that we can do to get them reconnected. Sometimes utility companies will waive, we don't pay late fees or reconnect fees, but sometimes they will add that to the following bills. We will try to work with the utility company and the client to get them reconnected.
Thank you. This is why I would ask Mrs. Cruz to come up here. I just wanted to make sure that we, as a city, got to see the direct impact and the immediate impact that this organization has for us locally, not just so much internationally, but how it affects us locally. We see them out there ringing that bell. And yeah, it's great to get the collections in, but it's not going to be enough, everybody. And I just want to ensure that we still have a great connection to somebody who continuously helps out with rental assistance, which every one of us sits up here and says that we have to continue that. And this is just another way to keep doing it. So thank you, Mrs. Cruz. I appreciate you coming up here and talking to me.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on. In your report, you note the number of people that you were able to help in 2023. There's a number there. Do you have a, do you have information on how many people you were not able to help due to lack of funding?
We have continued to help people, but we have had to refer people to other organizations. I can't give you a number right now.
But is it half, a third, 90% that you can help of people who come in?
We have been helping, well, lately, I would say.
For this year?
For this year. I would say a fourth of the people coming to our door. Because we try to help every single person that comes to our door.
Well, I'm talking about out of your funds, about how many people are you able to help because of the dollar amount that you have to work with?
75%.
Okay. And then the rest, you refer to other agencies, et cetera?
Yep.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Mendoza, were you? Okay, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I asked the same question last time around to a different committee. But on the residents that you help or the people that, with utility assistance, are they only San Marcos residents or Hayes County residents or?
I would say about 90% are San Marcos residents. We do have some clients that come from Kyle and some from Buta. But if there's, if we were doing 100 people a month, 90 of them are from San Marcos, maybe about five from Kyle and a couple from Buta.
And the other electrical companies, do they have some organizations also they can assist them with? Or do I recommend that to them as well?
They do have other organizations that help. And sometimes we partner with them because we're seeing extremely high bills. So we'll see a bill for $600 and we'll work with another organization to try to get them to zero.
And you also pay the late fees on that?
We don't pay the late fees, no. But sometimes we get them waived or they can be added to another, another bill further on.
Yeah, I'm talking about a different entity other than San Marcos. Those, you don't pay the late charges or?
No, no, we do not pay late fees or reconnect fees on any, any town.
Wow. Good to hear. Thank you.
Okay, any questions down here in particular regarding Salvation Army? Well, Ms. Cruz is still at the podium. In her report, in the request, she does limit that to San Marcos, the numbers. Okay. Mr. Mendoza, was that a motion to amend?
I have a question on the, on the motion.
Well, let's get the motion to amend out there.
If I can word it correctly, I would like to make a motion for amendment. Everything else except moving the funds of $20,000 from Access Network.
You said 10. You originally said 10.
I'm sorry, 10, I apologize. $10,000 from Access Network to the Salvation Army, leaving Access Network at 10,000.
Okay, I will second that.
Is there any particular rhyme or reason to removing it from the Access Network?
Well, I'm definitely a fan of STEM. I went through it when I was in school and I helped promote it with the company that I'm with right now. It's very important. But for years now, we've always talked about, let's do rental assistance. We talked about it a couple of weeks ago. Rental assistance, rental assistance, rental assistance. And here's a chance that we have to, to do it, to help another organization out who has proven time and time again. And I've known several families that I have taken over there. I've helped out, just ringing the bell itself. We just know that it's not as effective as we want it to be. And I'd like to help out people directly with this.
My question was specifically, why access?
Again, because I do know STEM. And a lot of STEM organizations are funded, I'll give you an example. Our organization itself funds 265 STEM organizations in the state of Texas just by itself. And that's usually through IT companies and stuff like that. Or even universities help fund Stems. It's nothing against that organization. Again, I'm fully, great, I love STEM. It's just, we're talking about summer camps, after-school programs, where we're trying to directly affect families staying with electricity on so these kids could do homework for, you know, making their STEM project or have electricity on for their computer systems. Helping families stay where they're at, not having to get into debt further and further for just paying electricity. That's kind of what I'm focusing on for those.
So the assertion is that, given the nature of the access project, they are, they have access to supplemental funding that?
It's just a generalization because again.
Oh, well, that's what I'm, but like just generally, like you, like there might be other funding sources for them.
Absolutely. And I can tell you, they're more than welcome to apply with NICE Incorporated for part of that 266. But again, I'm trying to focus on immediate, immediate effect. Given the holiday season coming up, the temperatures, we just saw Atlas 14 statistics here that things change with climate. And again, we're talking about just direct emergency assistance that's going to help somebody now. And again, I bring it up because we have been talking about this for the last two years for me.
Well, and I'm recalling in, I don't remember which it was, that there was a $75,000 request for Salvation Army and only 12,000 was in the number. And I let that one go. My concern about access and my concern from the beginning, and we've, we've mentioned it to her, is that we are, if my numbers are correct, we're over half that budget. We don't want to be over half of someone's budget. That's what I'm seeing. Am I correct?
For the, so the, the rule is we won't be over half the agency budget? But yes, you're right, we don't want to be more than half of a program either. That would be not preferable.
Right. And it looks like we're over that. I'm looking at 18 versus 33.8 thousand from last year.
But, yeah, you've got it.
But we, we've, we've been a substantial amount of the budget. And I don't want to be so much that, you know, if we can't do it, the program folds. They've got to be standing on their own to a certain extent. I know that's a relatively new program, but it's time for it to be more self-sufficient and not be reliant on city. And I'm with you on emergency assistance. People need, they need electricity and water, you know? They, they need to have their utilities, they need other things that they need. So that's why I seconded. And I am, I'm in support of, of that.
About the, half the funding, all of that, I think that kind of triggered one concern because I heard Ms. Lee used to say that without this funding, they can't keep the doors open. So is, is that, is that a situation as well as where? I know we've talked in the past in that conversation about how much we're funding, like we don't want the, this funding to be like the make it or break it, right? Like if we, so I wonder if that's like a similar concern as well? Because that's what I took from that comment, that.
Do you want her to address that?
Yeah, so, yeah, so just, just clear.
Well, hers is 13 compared to 80.
Right, well, but I'm just saying like in general, like, can things, will things be shut down with the Salvation Army if you don't receive any city of San Marcos funding?
So right now we have our kettle season going on. And when we saw that we were not going to get the funding, we did close our doors for two Tuesdays in December to go ring the bell to try to make more funding. And I can say.
That was so staff could go ring the bell because you didn't have enough volunteers?
Yes, yeah, so that we.
Did you hear that, people? Everybody watching at home, it's two hours.
We don't have all our locations filled. We struggle to get bell ringers. So we decided to close the office to go ring the bell. We do have a goal to try to make 65,000 for Kettle. And so that's what, we have one more week left. And that's what helps keep our doors open. So there are other towns, other counties, it's by the county, so we serve Hayes County, and such as Caldwell and Bassdrop. Three months after they finished their kettle season, their doors were closed because they ran out of funds. We continue, we have continued since I've been here to keep the doors open every day, except for these last two Tuesdays so that we could go ring the bell and try to make more funds.
Right, I, I just have one last comment. I don't know if this is the place to discuss it, but like I, I was really impressed by the Human Services Advisory Board, the discussions and the transparent matrix and all the uploads. I thought they have considered our criteria and feedback at every stop. So I'm inclined to support the recommendations as they're listed. But in terms of the importance of utility assistance and rental assistance, I'm wondering if we, or how do we go about having the conversation of exploring the unused utility customer-funded utility assistance? And having that being open to organizations like Salvation Army?
Talked about the RFP and Ms. Reyes, where is that now?
That's currently in process of being developed.
Okay, so it's not out on the street yet for anybody to apply?
But that was for the, the 100,000 or that was for the, the donations from the neighbors?
For the 120,000.
That's for the 100, yes, the donations from the neighbors. What y'all directed us was to put something in the utility bill that said that it could go to other service providers. It wouldn't be using city money, it'd be using private monies from our residents. Right, and so that's where that would go. But this is for the RFP, for the city-funded amount that comes from city.
But we have money in a piggy bank somewhere of the money that has been donated through the.
Yeah, the 43 grand.
The 43,000, correct.
So I guess what I'm saying is trying to tee up the conversation of that money in that piggy bank, I think it would make sense to be able to support smaller nonprofits like Salvation Army and whatnot who have that closer one-to-one with the neighbors. I think they're one of the first entities, well, a lot of the small ones are the first entities that folks go to. So that's where I'm at with this. I think that there's possibility to discuss meaningful support of those programs using that other piggy bank without having to haphazardly mess around with this matrix right now. But that's just, that's just what I'm thinking. So I'm open to other thoughts.
Yeah, we'll wait and see who applies and who has granted the ability to distribute utility assistance.
But the, but the piggy bank is separate from the 100,000, right? They're two different pots.
But it would be either one.
But, so, but we, there's not a possibility of taking the month, the 40-some thousand dollars that's been sitting there, that neighbors are already under the impression are going to utility assistance and like having smaller nonprofits be able to expedite that process?
That's why we're doing the RFP. They can apply, there's criteria that we set at our meeting.
Right, but we couldn't separate the two?
And, and I guess I just want to keep it back.
My understanding, that was for the 120 and the 43 and we're getting off agenda.
A little bit for the posting. I, I mean, we're talking about a separate program. I mean, I understand if we want to, we want to understand how that might impact your decision on the Salvation Army, but.
That's how it impacts.
I don't want to get too far into now discussing how we're going to structure another program, if that helps. I don't want to get too far into now discussing how we're going to structure another program, if that helps.
Ms. Reyes, would it be clear to say that's going to be six months before we get the RFP out? Give them time to fill it out, comes back and figure out, before somebody, whoever it might be, gets awarded? It's going to be six months?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just going to say, my understanding was not that we were talking about the 100,000 plus the money that's been sitting unused in a piggy bank that has not gone to our neighbors.
No, that, what's happening, so the RFP is for the 100,000 that is provided as part of the annual budget process that comes from your utility.
The 120.
And then, the 120, yes, correct, Mayor. And then, the other money that Councilmember Garza is talking about that is donated through private community members who do that, then, right now, utility billing is in the process of rewording that to say...
Right, but that affects future dollars. So, what about the 43 that we already have, that people didn't know that when they donated?
Correct.
That we're assuming is still for San Marcos.
Yes, so that, that is a question in regard to how you want us to do the other 43. That's there in the piggy bank.
I assume the 43 was also part of this. You did not?
I did not. But yeah, that's where I'm at. I think, I hear the Salvation Army's request, I just think if there's a possibility of securing funding for them in another way, which my understanding is there's $40,000 sitting in a piggy bank, I would like to explore that without having to mess with this, with this process.
Well, I know the Human Services...
That's a separate thing on another day.
I, I know we just heard that they're focusing on food and keeping people where they're at. Again, I'm a STEM program, went through it the whole nine yards. Why should we give 20,000 to a STEM program for after-school programs instead of emergency assistance?
I think you made that clear earlier.
I'm just wanting to ask if anybody has, I mean, okay, that's fine, yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we ready to vote on this one?
One fast question, and probably it was answered.
But Mr. Gleason's...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, then, keep thinking and pull up here what Ms. Gonzalez has to say.
Great, what is the turnaround time if someone comes and applies for assistance? Is it 24 hours, 12 hours, five hours?
We'll need you at the podium on the microphone, please, ma'am.
Three months, eight months, or whatever.
Our assistance is immediate.
I like that.
We call right then and there, and we get their utilities turned on right then and there.
Okay.
Provided they filled in the application and done what they have to do.
Right, right, it's not no waiting until...
But it's very immediate compared to other programs that there's months waiting time.
Yeah, thank you, good answer.
That's why I had suggested we have more agencies that can distribute that money because some agencies can move faster than the one who's doing it. And there's good reason why they don't, but...
Right.
Okay, are y'all ready to vote?
I'm conflicted on this one.
Well, you better hurry because we're getting ready to vote.
I know, you know, we do this every year when we go through these. There's so many needy organizations and never enough money to go around, and somebody inevitably gets left out and not enough. Summer programs are critical to a lot of these kids, and Dr. Chatai doesn't...
It's 97.
I know, well, they're going to do 125 next year, I went back and looked.
97 is what they did last year.
Yeah, they're planning on 125. But regardless, and I hate to nitpick it, after the board has done their work on this, we could do that every year, there's always going to be more need. I'm going to support it, but I don't like us moving this around too much. We give this out to the Human Services Board to do this process, and we could, there's always going to be more need.
Well, here's part of my problem about what they did, is that they had 10. And then, the comment was, I'd rather give it to somebody who's more local and knows more local needs or whatever. And I don't know who knows more about our local needs. There are many who do, I don't know who knows more about our local needs than our local Salvation Army. And if that was the justification for moving the money, I disagree with that justification, therefore, I'm supporting this motion.
And you're along the same lines I am, Mayor. Had they gotten 10 and we were trying to do 20, I probably would have said no to this. But you do do a good job, there's been a real need for the community. And to see you not get anything out of this, I think, wasn't fair, so I'm going to be in support of it.
All right, then let's vote. Ms. Trevino?
Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Sure.
Mary Houston?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Any other?
I still want to talk about the piggy bank at another meeting agenda. I'm just throwing that out there because that's how we end up missing piggy banks full of money.
But I have a thought on what we can, we'll talk later.
The other comment I'll throw is, thanks to the Human Services Advisory Board and staff for all the work they put into this.
Oh, yeah, I was going to thank them at the end of all this.
Yeah, I know you probably were, but thank you for me, too.
It's pretty intense when they...
Yeah, it's a ton of work, and it's a lot of pressure and a lot of emotions behind it, too. So, thanks for all the organizations that do a lot of good in our community and for the board and getting this money divvied up. It's not easy decisions.
And I may have missed it, you mentioned, the requests were twice the dollar amount of what the money was that we have available.
They were, yep.
So, that, that starts out real tough. And we used to do this as a council, so, yeah, I've, yeah, oh, that was fun. Well, we didn't have as many organizations, didn't have as much money.
There's 2,500 pages in our packet from these grants and applications and the presentation.
And providing all that was great. I have a question. Home Center, what was their request for? I know what I've read, but I'm going to come back and quote some of our rules, and that's why I'm asking why.
As I recall, it is for salary to support their case manager.
That's what I thought. And we say, we're not going to do salary. And this is the issue that I have with that one, is we've said, we're not doing salaries, we don't want to be in people's budgets, we don't want, if we don't continue funding it, that somebody gets laid off. So, that's what we have said, and I'm still of that mindset. So, I'm not sure how that happened, but it was for a case manager, is that correct?
Correct, but I do need to give you some information. What, what we have said in the application, what I had understood was the direction from council in a different meeting, is that the board can allocate up to 20% of a full-time staff member, and they can fully fund a part-time staff member.
That, that's not what's in this guidance on policy and procedure. We were okay with the part-time, well, for example, the Access Summer Program. If you're going to hire some, I don't know, maybe college students or whatever for that program, and that's a, you know, you come in and there's no expectation of future payment, that was fine. We were good with that because that was direct program expense. But as far as being in somebody's budget and part of someone's salary, I, I'm still of the opinion it's a no. So, I was surprised to see that one. Plus, is that one for case management, to help homeless and others get their IDs and all that other stuff? Okay, we had given a lot of dollars to Southside Community Center that has, that has structure. They've hired people to do that, they're hiring people, and we've given them a lot of dollars to do that. So, that's an issue that I have with this one in particular. So, I'm going to make a motion to move the, is it 20, Home Center? The 20,000 from Home Center and put 15 to the Salvation Army and five to Nosotros La Hente. That's my motion, I'll look for a second.
Absolutely not, not getting that second for me.
That's fine, you can vote against it. Or we change the amount. Anybody?
I'll second, so we can think about it in a minute.
All right.
I'm going to throw my two cents where...
Mayor, what was that number again, you want to move?
I had 20, oh, 15 to Salvation Army and five to Nosotros La Hente, which is another local and direct...
How much did Nosotros ask for?
Well, they were granted...
I'm flipping around like mad on this.
I think it was 20, but there was also for, hold on, let me look at this page.
Scrolling as fast as I can.
No, I've, I've done a sort by, okay, they had asked for 5,000 for coats, 10,000 for shoes, 5,000 for emergency assistance. The grant was to combine the coats and shoes. If I'm incorrect, Ms. Griffith, you tell me. And so, go with 10,000 there, so they asked for 15, it was granting 10. But then, emergency assistance, they had asked for five, and they were awarded zero.
Mayor, may I make a request? Instead of 15 to Salvation Army, can we make it 10 and still leave an extra five with the Home Center?
We can do that, we can do 10 Salvation Army, 10 Nosotros, and leave Home Center with five, I can live with that.
Cheers.
Oh, oh, I was actually thinking Nosotros with five and Salvation with 10.
That's what I just said. And leave five for, five for Home Center.
Yeah, I...
I can restate my motion to make it that. Mr. Gleason, are you okay with that on your second?
I'm fine, yeah.
How much did we give Southside for, we gave them quite a bit, like 50, like 50,000.
An obscene amount of money, yes, a lot of money, a lot of money.
And they, and they've hired people, they've got...
Yes, I do think they've done a good job. But I do think initially, when there was community and even concerns on this dais regarding their capacity to do so, we had a grace and we trustballed and really gave them the opportunity to show us what they can do with funding. Yes, Southside. And I asked for that similarly for the Home Center because anybody who does boots-on-the-ground work knows that the Home Center, the services and the case management that they do is unmatched. I think, and I know this is not your intention, Mayor, but I think it's really important for me to name and acknowledge that within different groups that do homeless outreach or are adjacent to homeless outreach, there is this perception that the Home Center continues to face retaliation because they use platform, their platform, to bring to light some historic concerns and trends regarding homeless outreach in general in our community. And so, I know that's not your intention, but I do think the fact that the Human Services Committee has a process and they had very thorough discussions, that was open and available online for anybody who has concerns about funding to watch and give feedback, and yet, nobody signed up to give that feedback. I think that it's really not a good look for us to, on this dais, without any proper or prior notification to everybody else, like, be making these moves. I think it's very problematic, and it, and it gives off a message that perhaps is not the intention of your motion to amend.
Yeah.
I mean, I think any of the, any of the organizations that received money could have been here tonight and should have realized there was a chance they could have lost it or received more and advocated for it. And Salvation Army shows up every week and does, and does do that. And it always, it always means more if you do. I have one question, I can't find the Home Center's grant page. What, do you have any idea what page your application is on here, Ms. Griffin?
I'm sorry, not in your book.
For me, it was easier to fill the website and find it.
I know.
That's what I did.
I was going back and forth, and I've got 20 clicks open at this point.
Mayor, is there any way we can just, again, I'm trying to find the background.
What I was getting at was, how much was it?
Sorry.
Mark, finish, finish what you're saying. Mr. Mendoza has something to say.
Do you have a question I could answer? Because I might be able to...
I just was curious, how much was the total was going towards staff of that 20,000? Was it all of it?
It was the whole thing, yeah.
All of it, which we have said...
That's the only reason I'm even...
Not going to do. I mean, they could have asked for money for other, but they didn't.
Why are you looking for that, you mind if I just...
I mean, if that, if that was, I guess, they broke the rules or didn't abide by it, then wouldn't it make sense to give them an opportunity to address it? Or I'm just, if that is your concern, Mayor, how did it get to this point where the whole Human Services Board voted on it, and now it's problematic? Like, that's interesting to me.
That I can't answer.
Just so you know, like, our understanding, my understanding from a different meeting was that it's okay to do 20% of a full-time position. So, what I was going to let them know...
But that should be in our guidelines, and it's not.
The, the, I, I think you superseded your own guidelines, honestly. But I can look back at it, but I do want to let you know, so many of these organizations are funding staff.
I was going to say that, I mean, for anybody who goes and looks at these applications, this is not the only org. This is not the only org. And if this is our process on just pulling this and pulling that when we want to, and the argument is lack of organization or lack of infrastructure, people cannot, as somebody who is literally a board president of a nonprofit, you cannot build organization, you cannot build infrastructure without access to capital, period. So, when we're funneling money to all these other places, and then they do well, duh, because they have access to capital. I mean, I've gone through all of these applications, it was 2,000-plus pages of applications that were in here. Home Center is not the only one who asked for something related to salary. I mean, this right here, I'll be honest, I'm losing my patience for it because as somebody who has volunteered with the Home Center, who has spoken to the clients that receive what they do, I mean, our community benefits in ways that we will never understand. And for us to sit here and just say, you know, hey, 5,000 here, 10,000 here, no, no. I mean, the humans, y'all did y'all's work, we are sitting here and saying it wasn't enough. And I'm sorry, the reasons that we're giving are not strong enough for me, and this just feels wrong.
And you can vote against it.
And I will, but I, I mean...
I wish they had asked for money for something else.
Well, I wished you weren't nitpicking, but, you know, sometimes we don't get our wishes granted. I think, I think it's really important for us to also meet the moment where it's at. I think we have made substantial strides in having, deploying our money to agencies who are doing the work. I voiced concerns about Southside, they have, like, met us, like, they've met those concerns. I think they're doing a great job. A couple minutes ago, I was compelled by my colleague, Mr. Mendoza, about, you know, reallocating the money from Access and putting it towards Southside. And again, I'm going to plug this so we don't forget, that piggy bank of other money, I think we can deploy it. I, I feel like we should use our discretion to flip it and reverse it and shift money when it aligns with the overall picture and not just on some policy that clearly Mayor and the Human Services Board have misalignment on, right? Like, I don't, I don't doubt that the two other entities that y'all are proposing get money deserve more money. I just don't think that this is the appropriate way to give them more funding. I'm willing to explore creative ways to get, like, give them more money. Again, that 45,000-dollar piggy bank, but I just think that this is inequitable, it's shady, it's weird, and I'm not about it, and that's all I got.
Okay, I'm voting against it.
Okay, Mayor, I went through my two cents worth. Someone that grew up with five brothers, five sisters, in a rural, poor family, shoes was a big thing for us. We had one pair of shoes for the whole year, and that hose on them and everything else. We would go buy them at Mundens, you might remember.
I remember Mundens, Gibson's and Mundens.
And coats was another issue. Our coats were torn, had holes on them, but we would make do. But the embarrassment was to go to school with, everybody had pretty fair shoes, and we had prehistoric ones, old. That's why I'm in favor of supporting Nosotros La Hente with some more funds. And as for the other one, what was it, the Southside Army or something?
Salvation Army.
Yeah. What I liked about them is they willing to help their clients or their customers pretty quickly, you know, when it's cold or when it's too hot. And when their parents worries about not paying their electrical bills, that's a lot of stress on their family. That's my two cents worth, I'd be in favor of Nosotros La Hente.
But taking it directly from the Home Center?
Well, we can, you know, I agree with the mayor. We did talk about this, about not funding for employees because let's say that we can't give it one year, that person gets laid off or whatever.
But we followed the rules per, they followed the rules per how it's outlined, correct?
Right, yes. Like, I'm sincerely devoted to following the council's direction, and that was how I understood it. So, that's how I directed the board, and that's what's in the application is, you know, you cannot fund more than 20% of a full-time position, and you can fund a whole part-time.
Right, and so...
Is this 10,000? How much, what percent is that of someone selling?
She said in the application here, I'm looking at it.
I'm looking for it.
It's 25,000 to fund this program, this particular position. And we do have it in there that this money will not be used more than 20% of a full-time position.
Yeah, so we can put that in their contract, and then if they submit...
And in her application... And in her application, it does say to run this program, particular portion of the program was twenty-five thousand. Funding's not available request amount, if you're gonna be able to run this program, she put twenty-five thousand. So I'm willing to do twenty percent of the twenty-five thousand because that's what's in the contract and those are the numbers that she put down herself.
And twenty percent of twenty-five thousand is how much?
Five thousand.
I didn't know if you had done the math on that already. It just happened to come out that way?
No, sometimes you get lucky.
Yeah.
Okay, so, at some point, we can talk about this all night, but at some point, we're gonna need to vote. It's nine o'clock. We've got other things we need to do.
I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be in favor of it. Um, look, what you put on these applications are really important. It's really difficult to get into all the nitty-gritty, all this. And I do too hate getting into moving money around after the Human Services Arbiter. We're the final arbiters of this. It's the way it is. And they may have missed something we didn't, but, um, I'm gonna be in support of it.
Okay. I'm not seeing any other, Mr. Scott.
I have a question. I don't know if it's already said, but they've already been not notified about what they're getting, right?
They're not getting it until we approve it.
Yeah, so the, the recommended funding is out there for the public to view.
Yeah.
But it's always known, known that City Council makes the final decision.
And you've clearly marked that, um, like on the document.
Yeah, on anything I can, yeah.
Okay.
No, that was good.
Okay. That's, that was my question.
Anybody wants to go and look, um, at the home center's application? It's page seven of eleven of her application. It's page twenty-four thirty-nine. And it's number three, if funding's not available, request amount, what is the minimum Human Service Grant needed to be able to run this program? That's twenty-five thousand dollars, so.
I'm inclined to see if it's possible. We can postpone this so we can ask clarifying questions to the entity. Because I feel like unless there's some type of super pressing deadline, um, right? Because the idea is this funding isn't supposed to make or break any of the entities, even those who are expecting this new funding. I would, I just think that proceeding with this without perhaps even having another opportunity for community input is gonna set like a very, very bad precedent.
It puts right now, it's a public hearing. This has been on the-
It's not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing.
Well, this took us-
And it's right before the holidays and it's like so on and so forth. And I don't think the general layperson understands the process enough to where they would know that they have to come here because we appoint a board and then we arbitrarily, like, move things around. Like, I don't think that that, that matches reality.
We've done that every year that I've been part of it.
Mayor, can, we have three options or two or three, and one of them being supporting the Salvation Army, the Home Center, and nosotros la gente.
What I have right now is of that, um, of the twenty, ten to Salvation Army, five de nosotros la gente, and leave five at Home Center.
Either way, the math works fine with that.
That, that was what I went to, um, second, and Mr. Gleason agreed with me. So, I mean, he, he maintained his second.
Can I ask a quick question? Sorry.
Yes, of course.
Nosotros la gente had three applications, one for shoes, one for coats, and one for emergency services. So will you specify? Like, we've, the board, uh, proposed combining shoes and coats and then not funding emergency-
I knew I needed to go back to that. Thank you for reminding me. I'm gonna say, I knew I needed to say that, and I'm gonna put emergency assistance. Are you, is your second still hold, Mr. Gleason?
Can I motion to postpone, or at what point can I make a motion to postpone after this one?
Let me finish this one thing real quick.
Second.
That's fine, I'll second.
Okay. Uh, all right, so, uh, yes, nosotros, emergency assistance. Okay. So, um, let's get this motion.
So I can't motion to postpone? That's not how that works? If there's something on the table?
After the-
Is that how that works?
It's a motion to amend. Can we do postpone a whole amendment when we're under a motion to amend?
We got a motion on the floor. We got a vote on.
It was on, there we go. I think you can ask to postpone anything during the meeting. It's just whether the, the whole council feels it's appropriate to postpone a pending item or not, or, or whether you wanna have the item voted on or not. It's, it's up to the council.
So you're wanting to postpone the whole allocation of these dollars?
Yes.
Second.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think it's, it's just-
Well, let me clarify. Do you mean, well, it's a postpone of the whole, the entire, the entire agenda item?
Right, because I feel like each part, uh, impacts the other.
So we're, we're gonna vote on the postponement?
I'm, I'm gonna be a no.
Liz Trevino.
Could be one of my last votes. I'm gonna be a no. I won't have a second.
Well, you're gonna get that chance in just a second. Let Mr. Trevino call the roll, please.
Wait, I mean, I think I just wanna share why. I think, uh, if that's allowable. I, I think I, I wanna share why, if that's allowable. I think it's really important that we allow space for community feedback. Allegedly, that's why we have a board, but I do think that we're overstepping and moving things around without a lot of rhyme and reason that makes sense to me personally. And so I think that it is doing a disservice to our neighbors to not let them know about this and give them the opportunity to chime in and ask clarifying questions to other entities. And that is why I made a motion to postpone.
And, and I'll say too, just on, just, uh, uh-
Mr. Gleason, quickly, please.
After the postpone, because it's on the amendments. I'll see if the postpone-
Well, once we're postponed, it's done. We go on to the next item.
That's fine, and if it passes, it does.
Okay. Mr. Trevino, we're gonna vote on the postponement.
Okay. Mr. Mendoza?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mayor Houston?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay. And Mr. Gleason?
No.
Okay, the motion passes, uh, forty-three.
So we are postponed and we're on to our next item. Uh, we didn't give a date certain.
I don't, I don't have a sense of what the next meetings are like, to be honest.
You can just say first or second meeting in January. You don't have to give us an exact date.
Wherever it fits.
Question, question though, is there-
Hold on.
And I'm sorry for my ignorance. Um, is there a reason why this is not a public hearing?
It was required.
But can I have a little bit more information?
There, there is not a legal reason other than, I think you've had the, the, well, this is not the federal, this is general funds. That, that's just, uh, there's not a legal reason to require one. It's just a, just, it's a policy of the, of the city, whether they want one or not, but that is not the current policy.
And comments can always be given at citizen comment.
Okay.
Um, and I got one-
So we're not keeping anybody from commenting. We just, there's no legal-
I just know sometimes, like, like especially being on the other side of it and being somebody who comes and speaks, when something is explicitly listed as a public hearing, it allows me to sit there and be like, oh, okay, you wanna come speak on this important issue.
No, I, I get that. We just, we just never have. But let me tell you, this used to, for I don't know how long, went from the Human Services into our budget and council didn't discuss it. Didn't look at it, didn't discuss it unless they happened to notice it in the budget.
Well, that council was tripping, cause it's important.
So, yes, it was my idea to take it out, look at it separately, get some public eyes on it. And so, you're welcome.
Is this gonna impact the distribution, any of this money?
Ms. Griffith, uh-
Yeah, I mean, I mean, with these-
Well, I'm going to ask that. Hold up. Uh, Mr. Gleason asked if this is going to impact distribution of dollars.
So typically, the contracts run from January first to December thirty-first, so this will impact that, and I'm assuming, and this may be a question for Mr. Aguirre, that since the funding has already been alloc, you know, like the five hundred and fifty thousand is already approved for this use, then I think no matter when you set the final allocation, we could still make the contract be from January first to December thirty-first.
Yeah, but as of right now, January first, some of these organizations are not gonna get the money. They would have if we just would have passed this tonight.
Hold on. Do we write checks or do we reimburse?
We re- reimburse.
Okay, but they still need to know what they're getting in order to-
To budget it.
Yeah, you know, it would be helpful, but, yeah.
It's a, it's a delay, but it's, it's just, our general funds to be spent within the fiscal year, the city's fiscal year.
Still, organizations for the next month aren't gonna potentially know how much they're getting. I think that's a major mistake.
And we still need a date to postpone to-
As much as we want piddly fart around moving money around.
We already voted, so we can just, like, set a date.
Mr. Gleason, if you'll just hold on, we've got to determine when we're going to bring this back.
That's fine, yes. That works for me.
We'll go with January seventh then.
Thank you.
Cause I would assume postponement would be to the next meeting unless we say something different.
Correct.
Okay. So, we are now to, oh, but I do want to thank you, your staff, Ms. Hernandez, and the Human Services Board for their careful attention. This was a lot to review, a lot to read. Uh, careful consideration is pretty intense, meaning what, almost meet weekly or weekly?
Weekly for several months.
For several months. So I thank them all, because I know this is not easy when the applications are twice what you have to give. So, yes, I, I, I thank them very much. Uh, we're on to item sixteen. Mr. Trevino?
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash two fifty-three R. adopting City of San Marcos guiding principles for the eighty-ninth Texas Legislative Session twenty twenty-five and declare an effective date.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. Hold on, we can't have half the people leave. Guiding principles for the Texas Legislative Session. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Questions, discussion?
Yes. Wait, are, are we not talking about it, or they're just leaving to leave?
We can make a, have a break, maybe? I don't know.
Well, we can't vote.
Oh, no, it's anarchy.
But is the, is the item open right now?
Yeah.
You continue with the meeting.
He was out.
No, I don't want, I don't want the wrath of the mayor. I'm gonna wait for her to come back in.
Feels like waiting for your mom at the grocery store.
My mother would never behave like that.
Shh, Kate. Motion to amend.
I would assume they've gone to place I can't go.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
Cause I need to find him in the hallway right outside.
Yeah, so we could just wait for them.
I think it's important that-
We've got close on taking that gamble.
Everybody be here. Well, I, I left the room.
I wasn't, I wasn't about to do all that. No, thank you.
Ms. Reyes, is there a presentation of any type, or we're just going with what was in the packet and approve, disapprove, or modify?
Correct. The guiding principles that you have in the packet are the guiding principles that have been reviewed by the Legislative Council Committee and provided to you with their recommendations. And Ms. Surley is here just to answer any questions, if you have any questions about anything.
And the track changes version was on the message board? Okay, yes, uh, which is not going through what the committee did, our changes. It's what was different from last legislative session to this one, which is all, all that we needed. So, um, Legislative Council Committee is Ms. Garza and Mr. Gleason and myself.
I wasn't there. I didn't vote on this, sorry. I had a family emergency.
I just meant you're-
Yes.
On the committee, but yes, thank you, cause I remember you did miss the last meeting. So, I've made a motion to approve. Are there any changes, any motions to amend?
Uh, I have a, I have a time.
Now would be the time. Okay.
All right. Um, yes, I'd like a, to make a motion to modify. Um, now, Mr. Aguirre, if I have multiple and they're in various section, like subsections of this document, how do I best go about it so it's most efficient?
My recommendation is one at a time, because if you mix-
That's all I'm gonna entertain is chair, one at a time. Unless you are very closely related.
Yeah, cause if you mix them, they might be in favor apart, and it's easier to one at a time like the mayor says.
And, uh, I'll just preface it with saying for the, the city, uh, people at large, the reason I am very particular about this issue, and for those people who do not know, the legislature only meets every two years. Uh, it happens on odd years, and that meeting only is a hundred and forty days. And so, when a city or any municipality goes to petition a legislature for a variety of things, it does carry weight and the document should be considered with, you know, great significance. So, um, okay, uh, my first motion is, uh, under mental health. Uh, I'd like to make, to make a motion to modify, uh, that the city support legislative action to establish a school mental health allotment fund.
Did you say that again?
A school mental health allotment fund, and I can get into that once.
Right, we need a second, and just to keep-
We need a second and I'll give-
Were you deleting something or are you adding something?
We need to have a second before we have discussion.
I, I know, but I'm trying to clarify what the motion is before-
It's, uh, to add.
Just to add a section?
Yes, ma'am, to add.
Thank you. Okay, is there, is there a second for her motion? Ms. Garza has seconded her, uh, Ms. Rodriguez's motion.
So for my colleagues, I'll be succinct. Um, last session, this, the legislature passed a bill, as some of you may know, the school safety bill. Um, however, a lot of districts have, uh, justifiably argued that this money does not fund mental, mental health, and we do see an increase in mental health crises experienced by our youth. And so basically, this would ask the state to create a separate budget, uh, a separate funding, a line item funding for school districts uh, so that they could, you know, use the money to address mental health issues in schools.
Tell me again where, exactly where you want that to go?
Uh, under mental health. Or, uh, education, wherever y'all best feel it, it, it-
No, I, I'll go with, it's your motion.
I wanted to do mental health.
Would you state it one more time, please?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, support legislative action to establish a school mental health allotment fund.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I'm in. Okay, Ms. Trevino, we're gonna vote on this one.
Okay, there it goes. Um, Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Yeah, it's fine.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion pets at seven zero.
All right, next one?
Cool, thanks. Um, uh, second motion is to support legislative action to accr- increase funding for local mental health authorities, otherwise known as LMHA, A's, to provide early intervention services to prevent crises.
What was the acronym you just used?
Uh, LMHA, it stands for Local Mental Health Authority.
That'll support a police department, absolutely I'll support that. Yes, our mental health department, police department, I'm so down to support that.
So you, they already have, they're, you just wanted-
This is increase in funding.
Increase in funding, that was the term you used.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
Um, okay. Yeah, I'm done. Uh, any more discussion? Mr. Trevino, let's vote.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Garza?
Yes.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes, because I see this going to more funding for our police department, uh, for, for their mental health. That's awesome. Thank you, that's a good thing for a police department.
It aligns with a lot of their goals.
Yeah, our police department getting that money's gonna be great.
Okay.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Ms. Rodriguez?
The only thing that I'm gonna ask really quickly is Hayden and Carrie are trying to put it up on the screen.
She's trying to type this faster and we're both on it.
So, and, and so just maybe try, try to think of it a little, or maybe say it a little slower.
I'm sorry, Hayden and Carrie. Uh, so that one was, should I reread it just for them?
Yes, please.
Uh, support legislative action to increase funding for local mental health authorities to provide early intervention services to prevent crises.
Do we have one of those here?
We do.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at the state website. It says there's thirty-seven of them.
Their, their geography, like the boundaries, it's, it's large.
Okay, yeah, and, and I couldn't, couldn't find one.
Yeah, but the vast majority of their funding is state.
Okay, but you said increase funding, so that covers that. Next one.
Um, so I have three more under mental health, so sorry. Um, a motion to support legislative action to expand access to maternal mental health support throughout pregnancy and the postpartum period. And I do have them all written down, if I could single.
Yeah, I usually send them to Hayden in advance.
All right.
Just to make this part of the meeting go faster.
Yeah, sorry, I tried to put it in the- Yeah, it didn't. I didn't have my ideas.
We're, we're getting there. We're getting there. Uh, and you said through post-
Yes, and I'll get into why, uh, after.
Uh, I'll second it.
Uh, so for those who don't know, the legislature expanded, um, services for Medicaid people who are postpartum to twelve months. However, a minute- However, many people still struggle with postpartum after that twelve months, um, and we know that there's very little that we know about postpartum, and so, uh, when, uh, when we're having people, forcing people to have babies, as we do in Texas, uh, we should be providing them the support necessary that comes along with having a child, so, that's why.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded, Ms., uh, I did.
Oh, you did?
I beat you to it.
Really?
Ms. Trevino, let's vote.
Ms. Garza. Aye. Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
And Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Next one?
Um, support legislative action that expands eligibility for Medicaid.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Questions?
Uh, for those who don't know, just justification, Texas routinely refuses to accept the matching funds that the federal government provides us, meaning that we cannot pro- provide Medicaid, Medicaid services to the people who desperately need it, and so, this is just asking the state to accept those matching funds that they've been eligible for forever.
And I'll weigh in on that, I'm gonna be a no on this one. Look, those are, those are discussions the state and federal government can have, and partially what we're against is the state is turning it down because of the requirements, the federal government has gotten involved in the Medicaid programs. So, they give that money out, then they require things, that's a battle for the two of them to have, and who knows what's gonna happen anyway with Medicare.
You can vote now.
So, I'm gonna vote no on this one.
Okay. And the rest of us are gonna vote as Ms. Trevino calls our name.
Mayor Houston.
I'm a yes.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason.
No.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Motion passes six to one.
Next one, Ms. Rodriguez?
And so, this one, I put it under mental health, but y'all feel free, if you hear it, if it belongs under housing.
I'm sorry, where was it back, the one before, about Medicaid, where does it go?
Uh, mental health.
Still mental health?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Uh, this one is the final one under mental health, but like I said, y'all can reorganize it if necessary. Uh, support legislative, I make a motion to support legislative action to increase funding for permanent supportive, supportive housing programs, so the Housing First programs.
Did you say permanent?
Per- that's what it's called, uh, permanent supportive housing, that's how Texas refers to it.
Now, I'm just trying to make sure I got it right.
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Where, how, what agency would that happen?
So, uh, my understanding is that this is in partnership with, um, its municipalities, with it's a couple of people, I think, I don't know off the top of my head, so I don't wanna sit here and.
That's all right, but do we, do we know if there's somebody who's gonna carry a bill on these?
Oh, yeah, I mean, these have been legislative priorities for a while. Um, people, people.
A long time to get something passed.
Yeah, proponents of permanent supportive housing are basically arguing, what I've heard this council argue many times, is that, um, we can give people all the resources in the world, but if they need homes, if they need a place to live, and we're not meeting that need first, everything else is, you know, not a waste, but it's not meeting the direct need, and so, that's what this would do, is increase fund, state funding for Housing First programs.
Second.
All right, Mr. Scott has seconded it.
Uh, I'm gonna be a no on this one, this is too generic. Um, and we've heard, uh, Housing First isn't always the best thing that always works, so I like these peer programs, um, support programs, um, and all these other mental health programs that are after, I'm all for those, but saying that Housing First is the bend-all, be-all, and this body says that it, I'm not in support of that.
I, I think shelter first is incredibly important, but how you're going to get to the housing takes a while to get all the things in place, but I'm gonna go ahead and vote for this so that we can look at getting there closer. Um, it's just temporary shelter that can be for a long term. It's easier to get to quickly than the permanent housing.
But Housing First, it, it really, I mean, if it's like emergency type stuff, but when you say housing, permanent housing first, I, I just think it's too, we don't, I don't know.
You can vote against it, Ms. Gleason.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Okay, Ms. Trevino?
Mr. Gleason.
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, no.
Sorry. Um, Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes five to two.
Next one?
Uh, so, this next one, uh, I wanna make a motion to amend, and I don't know how this one works, because there is not a se- a section. Uh, I was surprised to see we didn't have a section, I mean, housing has been such a prominent conversation.
Your amendment can be to create a section.
To create a section, and then I have to make amendments for everything under?
No, just.
No? Okay, so, I'll make an a, a motion to include a housing section, um, that includes, uh, that we support legislative action that prevents unnecessary evictions, um, to promote housing stability and protecting tenants from undue hardships.
Yeah, word. How do you define un- oh, I'm sorry, gotta wait for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, how, how do we define unnecessary?
Well, usually when you see, um, legislative priorities like this, you'll have people from, whether it be JPs, whether it be people who actually handle this eviction process, the hope is, is that somebody files a bill so that those people can have an opportunity to discuss what they believe are unnecessary and erroneous evictions.
So, basically, they'll filter out in the House committees and all of those things.
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, I can, I can do that.
Hmm.
Let's vote.
Let's vote, Ms. Trevino.
All right, Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason.
This is another one, I think it sounds good, but it's pretty generic, I think.
So, you're a no?
I mean.
Can we get some more light in here?
Yeah, I hadn't turned it down, so we could actually read those.
I know, but we're not doing that now, so.
I mean, I don't, I don't know what that really means, so, I mean, I'll vote yes, but I don't, I don't know what it means.
Okay. We got you, yes.
I mean, it's not an agenda.
Ms., uh, Ms. Rodriguez? Any more?
Yes, ma'am. Um, another one is to support legislative action that seals a tenant's eviction records in the event a court rules in their favor.
Seals eviction records?
In, in the case that a court rules in their favor.
Are we talking for just that particular case, or their entire renting record?
Uh, that's for any case that is ruled in their favor.
Case by case.
Okay, case by case, no, okay.
Um, the, for those who don't know.
Would you second that?
Oh, I'll second that, that's fine, yeah, I'll second that.
Yeah, uh, having a, an eviction record sealed allows, as we know, people the opportunity to actually go and get housing, uh, right now, that acts as a extreme barrier, and so.
And again, it's only if they're found.
If it shows their way, they shouldn't get deemed for it.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, so, and again, it's only if they're found to be, not in the wrong, so they, it's, cool, okay, I definitely second that.
Okay. Let's vote.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mayor Houston.
I'm in.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Uh, but I'm curious how it's not that case anyway.
Are you a yes or no?
Well, I'm still gonna say my opinion, I mean, I'm, I'm not just a yes or no, and some, some of this is going pretty fast, so, I, I mean, yes, but I don't know how it's not already the case anyway, that you went on court cases.
Pretty messed up, right?
Get it expunged anyway.
One would think, but.
With JPs, I don't, I don't, whatever, yes.
Right, so, yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza, sorry.
Aye.
Thank you, sorry.
Right, and I, I guess just, yeah, the, the discussion, and then, once the time for voting.
On all of them?
I'm gonna interject before I might get a chance, and before it's all.
Okay, so I'll just go forward with the next one. Um, so, we talked about this one, uh, support budgetary measures to increase state funding for low-income housing in Texas, especially for the most cost-burdened households at or below fifty percent of AMI.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Um, dollars coming from where?
I'm sorry?
Dollars coming from where, increase in funding?
Uh, wherever the state feels that the dollars need to come from, I mean, the state's kinda hard to, especially their appropriations.
That, that's okay, I just didn't know if I had missed it.
Oh, yeah, state funding, mm, yeah, increased state funding.
Right, but we, we don't know where, but that's okay.
Do you need Amanda to repeat it, or you're good, cause that was like a long one.
Yeah, sorry, I'm going fast.
No, but at least this one was a little more specific, so I can be in support of this, where this isn't just a, this is, you know, kind of a more specific act.
Well, some things you, the, the danger about over specificity when it comes to the legislature, I mean, there's a ton.
Well, if I suppose so, just to know the way.
If I've gotta make a decision, I need to have something I can work with, right?
Yeah.
I need to know what I'm, what I'm doing.
That's okay. Ms. Trevino, we're voting.
Okay, um, Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mayor Houston.
Yep.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Yes.
Mr. Gleason.
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Okay. You have another one?
Uh, oh, yes, um, sorry, I have a lot of notes. Uh, I make a motion to remove, uh, under economic development, the support for the developments on and near the San Marcos Regional Airport, FM one-ten, and adjacent railroad, which will provide intermodal freight capacity and a key link to national transportation infrastructure, as well as bring thousands of jobs to the area.
That's all one?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's.
It's under economic development?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'll second that. Ms. Garza's seconding this one.
Out weird here, that, what, what language was added and cut here?
No.
No, it's this full, full removal.
That's a negative.
It's the first one under economic development, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And you wanna strike it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
This is gonna be one of the potential, most important things this community will ever do, is if we wanna pay for affordable housing, if we wanna keep tax rates low, if we wanna keep people in their homes, if we wanna pay the human health service ivory board money, we gotta, we have to diversify our tax base, plain and simple.
Increase our tax base.
Increase it.
Increase our tax base, and diversify it, and bring different jobs, and so, I, I don't think people quite realize how important that area and that land, and what that development could potentially mean to this community. We are a poor community, we wanna help everybody out, um, we gotta have some diversification of our tax base, and all the jobs that this is gonna be potentially in reach. There's not hardly a location in the country that has got the opportunity with an airport, one-ten, the railroad, a toll road, and I-35. It is prime for development, it can be done correctly and safely.
Toll road?
Toll road's only like seventeen miles away.
Are you talking about one-thirty?
Toll one-thirty, absolutely.
I thought maybe you were talking about one-ten.
And, and I, I think, if there's anything in this document, that is one that fifty years from now would be the most transformational thing in here, period. And I know we wanna fund all these things, and if you're not looking at this economic development without asking the state for, and it's not just us, too, this is additional money, it's gonna go to the state, Caldwell County, they're a poor county, the amount of additional jobs that are gonna come for the people who live in Guadalupe County, um, this is a major mistake to take this out. To me, this is one of the most important ones in there, of what this community is gonna, it's gonna mean to this community for the next forty to fifty years.
I'd like.
Absolutely not.
I'd like to point out that, uh, we just postponed the, uh, funding for nonprofits based on taking things away and moving things around. I understand adding things, that's great, but we're taking something away that the board decided on, so, using the same logic, then why don't we just postpone this?
No, absolutely not.
I'm, I'm just using the same logic.
No.
Um, the last time we talked about just postponing it because we were taking things away and moving money around, we wanted the same thing here. We, it's not just, this is not beneficial for us to keep pushing because it's jobs and it's opportunities for everybody, if you look at what happened on the east side of Austin, off of, um, St. Elmo, it's all heavy industry, and it's not smokestacks, it's a different development that we have, it's a different mind frame we have, there's no smokestacks, you wanna see smokestacks, go down to nineteen eighty-four and see, nineteen eighty-four, um, go down the road in Maxwell and see the smokestacks from the power plant. This is not just that, but it's also environmental protections, this is ensuring that the city of San Marcos has some kind of say-so into it to say how we wanna environmentally direct this, because if it goes to county, it's gonna do what they're gonna do, and you see what's happening now, they just talked about it. It's all county, this will give us a way to push for jobs, and let's not forget that we've got Gary Job Corps, the largest job corps in the nation, right there against us. It is vital that they have opportunities and connections, I mean, there are things that are just perfect for that area, um, it's needed, and we all know that that's one of the poorest areas in the region, Reedville is very poor. It's just another way for Maxwell, Reedville, Martinville, San Marcos to have opportunities for business owners, for, I mean, just, it's, it's great for us, and again, we talked about having not enough money, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we need more money from these industries, we need more money from, uh, businesses. Just wanna point that out again, we can't die on this.
And, and I will say, if I may, for the public watching, I'm not, uh, striking this because I don't care about, you know, diversifying our economy, bringing jobs, I mean, my god, you find me a good job to go, I mean, I'm broke, you find me a good job, I'm not against that. Um, this right here, though, is very specific, very specific about a particular development, as people came and mentioned, that a lot of people in this community have outright said they're not with, whether it be through shady things that happen as far as, uh, buffer zones and all these things that happen, and, and people, I, it, it's just so specific. It's one thing to say, okay, uh, allow us to support, you know, the diversification of our, of our economy, which we sort of get into in the following two bullet points. This is specific to one major development.
Yes.
That we are sitting there telling the legislature, as if the entire city is behind this one specific development. Nowhere in, in, excuse me if I'm wrong, nowhere else in this document are we so specific.
And I'll get into why, this is three thousand acres, there's not another place in the state of Texas or the nation that has an opportunity to diversify, and, and the big part about this document is, is bringing this to light.
I don't know about that, it's a very bold statement.
So that the people at the legislature understand what this means to Texas, to the region, and our community, and the federal government, too. When we go to DC, one of the big things they wanna hear about is, what are you guys doing to diversify your economy, how are you bringing jobs into the region? And there's not another project anywhere close to anything like this, so I think it does need specificity, and look, the city's only how many thousand acres, and this is three thousand acres?
No, it's two, Mark, it's two.
Huh, it's two, it's like twenty-five hundred, isn't it?
No.
There's something like that. Uh, but anyway, regardless, this needs specificity in here, and it needs to be called out and advocated for, and it can be done correctly, yeah, some people want it to be done differently, one way or the other, something's gonna happen out there.
Well, well, part of it is the somewhat unique nature, which you mentioned, uh, between the railroad and the airport and major highways.
There's, there's not another one in the country like that.
There's very few anywhere, yes, so, okay, um.
I wanna see something unique out there, not just something really interesting.
I think it's time, I think it's time to vote.
Ms. Garza.
Just is to remove it, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I'll, I'm okay with removing now.
Mayor Houston?
No.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No, okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Gleason.
No.
Mr. Mendoza.
No.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
And no.
Oh, okay, the motion, uh, fails with five to two.
Two to five.
I'm sorry, yes.
Do you have any more?
Uh, no, ma'am, I don't believe so, thank you.
My page is now full, but I did have another sheet, so, we're ready to go.
And if, uh, city staff needs any help, like, clarify, I have it all on mine.
Good. Email it, or check on this. Okay, those were a lot of amendments, it is now time to vote on the main motion as amended. It is now time to vote on the main motion as amended. Ms., Ms. Trevino.
Mayor Houston.
Uh, aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
And Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Oh, God, I'm 17.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-254R approving an authorization for change in service to extended contract with McCoy Tree Surgery Company through an interlocal agreement with Lower Colorado River Authority for continued tree trimming services for the San Marcos Electric Utility Division through September, September 30, 2027, with two additional possible one-year extensions for an annual amount not to exceed $2 million and a total contract price not to exceed $10 million. Authorized and city manager who are designated to execute the authorization for change in service and related documents on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza to approve, uh, these changes to the McCoy Tree Surgery Contract. Questions?
No, the only comment I have is how critical this, this work is to protecting the infrastructure in the event that we have another snowpocalypse, a wind event, whatever, like preemption and doing this work ahead of time. McCoy's does a pretty good job of doing it. I get really no complaints. And so, um, yeah, it's great.
I, I remember how many people were out of power, self-included, uh, because of trees and things down, I don't know, that ice storm we had maybe 15 years ago, and we don't have that anymore since we've gotten really on it with the tree trimming.
It makes a huge difference.
Well, I'll go with the broken record again. I have continuously supported this program, and I will just because I have elderly neighbors and just everywhere around the city who lives in the, in the neighborhoods who have all these 200-foot trees.
Well, remember, this is, this is over the right-of-way easements. This is not private...
You're right. But that helps because of the right of easements, that they can't go out there. They wanna go out there and do it themselves. They can't do it.
Yeah, it's a liability.
Then let's move on.
Thank you.
I appreciate the connection.
No, that's a good point. Ms. Trevino, we'll vote.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mayor Houston.
Aye. It has been an hour and 37 minutes since we've had a break. Do y'all wanna take a break?
This is a little one.
No. We, we've probably got... Do y'all wanna press on?
Yeah.
Press on.
I think they're pretty easy.
Well, if people could take a bio-break and get right back.
It's okay, we can go.
But...
She's gonna ring her bell.
All right, we're gonna press on.
Number 18. Consider approval of resolution 2024-255R approving an authorization of change in service to a contract with Techline Inc. through cooperative purchasing interlocal agreement with the Lower Colorado River Authority for the provision of materials and supplies to be used by the San Marcos Electric Utility to extend the contract for an additional year with four possible additional one-year extensions and an estimated amount not to exceed $6 million. Authorized city manager who are designated to execute the authorization of change in service and related documents on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
I'll give Ms. Rodriguez the motion, and Mr. Scott the second for approval. Are there any questions? Ms. Trevino, we will vote.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
And Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 20.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-256R approving an agreement with Lower Colorado River Authority for the provision of various goods and services concerning electrical transmission, control, and substation facilities, which includes the ability to contract directly with LCRA vendors through cooperative purchasing an amount not to exceed $8,600,000 per year for a term of five years with three possible additional one-year renewals. Authorized city manager who are designated to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declare an effective date.
That's to approve.
Second.
Motion for Mr. Scott. I'll give Ms. Rodriguez the second. Let's vote.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez. Yes, and Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 21.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-257R authorizing a refund of $765 to Jeffrey Colasord for the fee paid to appeal to the city council, a decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding a conditional use permit for Tantra to serve alcoholic beverages for on-premises conception, consumption, conception at 217 West Hopkins Street and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Rodriguez, seconded by Ms. Garza. Any questions?
Mm-mm.
Let's vote.
Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Yes.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Sorry, now item 21.
Hey, discussing confirm appointments to fill vacancies on the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee and provide direction to staff.
I will place the name of Nicola Ladkin, who would be the Hayes County rep. That name has been given to us by the county, and for us, it's one of our people, and I would put the name Stefan J. Centeno.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Oh, that was my motion, so I should've been more clear.
Second.
Any questions?
No.
Let's vote.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Well, by golly, we did it. Item 23. Two, 22.
22. The city council will convene an executive session pursuant to section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code Consultation with Attorney to receive legal advice regarding the matter of Whisper Master Community LP versus City of San Marcos, cause number 24-2917 filed in Hayes County District Court.
As always, we post the executive session on our 3 o'clock work session agenda. We held the executive session at that time, and we concluded, so we can move on to item 23.
Consider action by motion or provide direction to staff regarding the city council's executive session deliberation under section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code Consultation with Attorney during the work session and/or regular meeting regarding the matter of Whisper Matter Master Community LP versus City of San Marcos, cause number 24-2917 filed in Hayes County District Court.
And we did give direction to staff. Next item is question and answer session.